Are you ready?
Ready.
We've got about a minute.
Where is he? If Mr. Monroe's in the room, can you please report to the front? Mr. Monroe? Mr. Monroe? There he is.
Did we find him?
Yeah. We're good. I now reconvene the regular meeting of Board of Education at 6:00 PM with Bridge, Cruz, Monroe, Na and Shaw present. Before we begin, please silence all electronic devices and note that these proceedings are being recorded. Pat?
The Board met in closed session from 4:40 PM to 5:30 PM regarding the following matters which are all described in detail on the printed agenda. Conference with legal counsel existing litigation, one case. Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, one matter. A student discipline matter. Student readmissions. Public employee appointment. Elementary principals and junior high principals. High school assistant principals. Conference with labor negotiators, ACT and CSCA. And public employee performance evaluation superintendent. The Board took the following action. By unanimous vote of five zero with Bridge, Cruz, Monroe, Na and Shaw voting yes, appointed the following individuals. Stephanie, Stephanette Graham as principal of Lytle Elementary School effective July 1, 2023. Appointed Cha Hune as principal of Newman Elementary School effective July 21, 2023. Appointed Teresa Monroe, Teresa Monroe as principal of Briggs K8 School effective July 1, 2023. Appointed Camilla Kuglinski as assistant principal at Chino High School. Effective date to be determined. No further action was taken, which requires public disclosure.
Thank you so much, Pat. Tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mr. Cruz.
Please stand up.
Ready? Begin.
My friend, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed, I want to say something. The meetings are known to unfortunately get a little heated and people are yelling or saying things out loud. We want to keep you all in this meeting. We want to hear everybody. So I ask that you respect each other. You listen, like how we teach our children, to listen and to respect and not to yell out. Please be careful with even the applause. I don't want to have to hammer an applaud because it's getting out of control. Any chanting, yelling, please keep that out of here. This is a meeting and we have to do our business in the public. So we appreciate if you guys can just literally respect each other regardless of your differences, okay? Next up are comments from employee representatives. Brenda Walker, ACT.
Good evening, President Shaw, School Board members, Superintendent Enfield, District Cabinet, members of the Chino Valley community and guests. I want to reiterate the Association's position on the proposed new board policy, five zero two zero. This policy would directly require educators to violate California law which prohibits such notification with student consent. It would also require many educators to violate their own professional and personal ethics. The policy would be divisive, unnecessary, and would make many students feel insecure and unsafe at school. We support the rights of the LGBTQ plus community and all the students to feel safe and secure at school. Ensuring that all school, all students are safe is the right thing to do. With this policy, not only will some students feel unsafe, but it will also open the district to potential legal liability under state and federal privacy laws as well as under California's anti-discrimination laws. Has the Board considered the recent ruling by United States District Judge John A. Mendez where the lawsuit filed against Chico Unified School District demanding that they do to students exactly what this Board is proposing was dismissed? And what was the basis for the judge's decision? Protecting students' privacy and keeping students safe from being bullied or harassed. Has the Board considered the cost of almost certain litigation and how it takes money away from supporting students and puts it in the pockets of attorneys? This is a misuse of taxpayer funds. State and federal funds are to be used for children's education, not a Board member's political agenda. Vital attention and discussions regarding school programs and supports for students' academic achievement and other topics that are within the Board's purview have taken a backseat to the discriminatory policies this Board continues to impose against our LGBTQ plus students who, who are some of the most vulnerable children. What are the repercussions for educators, if any, for non-compliance? Aside from the fact that the policy is just wrong, how many notifications will parents get? Will they get a notification from every subject teacher a student has in middle school and high school each year for their whole school career? Is it going to be a centralized pronoun notification database in the office for teachers to check so they aren't tripping over each other and bothering each other with the same parent notification and parents getting multiple notifications? And when do these notifications have to happen? During the class period, between periods? The constant interruption to the already impacted school day is unimaginable. We urge you to vote no on this proposed new board policy. It's bad for students. It's bad for educators and it's bad for the district and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Danny Hernandez from CSEA. And we have Barbara Bearden from CHAMP. Emily Lau.
Good evening. I am Emily Lau, the newly elected CHAMP president. Good evening, President Shaw, School Board members, Dr. Enfield, Cabinet and Chino Valley community. This week has been leadership charge for all administrators and management personnel. It's an exciting time for our district leaders to come together and engage in new learning. We would like to thank the Cabinet and the CIIS team for providing a positive, supportive week full of practical action steps to support us in engaging with clarity for the upcoming school year. Congratulations to our newly appointed administrators, management personnel, certificated and classified staff. On behalf of CHAMP, I would like to say welcome to the family. I'd like to remind families that now is the time to log into your parent portal accounts for data confirmation. All offices are open, so don't hesitate to call your child's school or pop in for any assistance you may need. As adults, we are preparing to return to a new school year and it's always important to remember what it was like as a child getting ready to return to school. I'm sure some kids are happy and excited and thrilled to come back to school while others are dreading it and wishing they had a few extra weeks. They may be nervous and anxious. We want all of our students to know that we missed you over the summer. We care about you. We're looking forward to seeing you on August 7th for a great first day of school and for an amazing school year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're now on to comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. Speakers will be called in the order the request was received. Instructions for public comment are available by speaker cards. Please listen for your name and be prepared to approach the podium. Any comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that item. We will unfortunately need to stop you or ask you if you have anything else if you decide to try to bring an agenda item into the non-agenda item. So please keep on topic and make sure that your card was submitted correctly. If you use this time, which that's what I just said, once the Board has commenced deliberations on an issue, speaker cards will not be accepted anymore. Mr. Cruz, can you please explain the public comment guidelines?
Speakers, you have three minutes to address the Board. You cannot donate your time. If you read on behalf of an absent person, that would be considered your time. Begin comments at the green light. The yellow light means you have 30 seconds left. The red light means your time is over. Please refrain from making comments while speakers are at the podium. Board Policy 1312 dot one outlines the procedures regarding complaints against an employee.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Pat?
Madam President, we have 17 requests to speak on non-agenda items.
Seventeen? Okay.
The first speaker is Gloria Cicorelli, followed by Oscar Avila.
Three weeks ago, if we would have said that Joy Reid, Michelle Obama and Sheila Jackson Lee and Katanji Brown Jackson were affirmative action picks, we would have been called the racist. But now they're coming out and they're saying it for us. They're coming out and they're saying, I'm only here because of affirmative action. Yeah, we know. You do not have the brain processing power to otherwise be taken really seriously. You had to go steal a white person's slot to be taken somewhat seriously. Steal a white person's slot. We live in a world where a white supremacist like Charlie Kirk, who himself dropped out of community college, can, with his whole chest, accuse a sitting Supreme Court Justice of lacking brain power for her position because her college acceptance occurred as a result of affirmative action and not her Harvard Law degree or decades of legal expertise. We live in a world where someone like that man can make a transparently racist and misogynistic statement and pastors like Jack Hibbs allow him to use their platform to wrap their message
Please, guys, let her speak.
To wrap their message in their version of the Word of God. We live in a world where that mentality has created an environment where BIPOC peoples in this city, from all socioeconomic backgrounds, advocate against what's best for little children just like them just because they think that hatred and bigotry is God-ordained because of this scripture or that sermon. That mentality leaves them free to sit on the sign light and do nothing while kids like them are taught incomplete and inaccurate histories, all because they are groomed to believe the Bible tells them so. We live in a country where instead of having the uncomfortable conversations and dealing with delusional thinking allowing racism and bigotry to flourish and thrive in this country, we allow white supremacists to further groom their followers to believe that people hate America versus the unchecked racism it was built on. This district needs black history. My kids deserve an age-appropriate, unredacted version of their history. They should not be in their 30s when they learn that Harriet Tubman was also a spy for the Union Army. I'm met, I want to-
Sir, that's your first warning.
I want to finish by saying those letting what I'm saying go in one ear and out the other because I'm making everything about race and to those more upset about being called racist than about racism. It feels like people like me are making everything about race because to people like you, nothing is about race. Failure, failure to address a racist past does nothing but guarantee a racist future. Thank you.
Thank you. If you're going to continue to behave like this in the beginning, we will have you all escorted out. Possibility of losing your seats when you are allowed to come back in. Please don't make me do that. Let's have order. And I'm speaking to both sides, of course. Yes, I am. And I've already given one warning to a particular individual. Guys, people are entitled to speak during their time. If you want to speak about anything they said, do it during that time and address it to the Board only, please. We can, we're elective officials. We can handle them saying whatever they can. This is our job, okay? So relax, take a deep breath, let's all behave.
Oscar Avila, followed by Karen Reyes, followed by Ben Richards.
Okay, Board, well, I think we're gonna have a good night today. And yeah, Chino, let's be respectful. We act different in Chino. We don't, we don't say anything. We're just, we take, we take our time in the podium. So anyway, what I wanted to say is I'm grateful to each Board member and the community that's always been here for, you know, for the past almost 30 years, you know, we've been, you know, coming together as a community, you know, and as a community, we're fighting, you know, even during COVID, so we're open schools. And what happened is at that time, you know, the people that are here now that are from the outside coming in, you know, fighting the new board that we have, they didn't come two and a half years ago, you know, when our kids were locked down during COVID, when our kids were out in the rain because, you know, you know, they weren't vaccinated, they didn't want to wear a mask, when our kids were talking about, my daughter went through that, talking about migraines because they have to wear the mask. None of, none of the people that are here from the other areas that now all of a sudden they care, they weren't here. You know, they were locked up in their house with their mask on, you know, scared of the boogeyman, the invisible virus and stuff, you know? So, so what it is now and all of a sudden, you know, the, the new thing is the, you know, the rainbow or the kids that are, that are gender confused, you know? And the, the Pew report that came out that kids that are over 30 or adults over 30, the, the percentage of, of gender confusion or, 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 you know, gender dysphoria is like 1.4%, right? Kids under 30 is like 5 point something. Why is that? What happened within, you know, within those 30 years, you know, what it is, it's, it's social, you know, a social contagion, you know? People have been, have been told, told through school, you know, kids have been, have been convinced, you know, that, that maybe, you know, you're like Barbies, you're a girl, maybe like this, you know? So what it is nowadays, you know, these parents think, or these outsiders think that, and they're not even parents, right? Most of the people that are here don't have kids in the community and, and they use these kids as little props. They use the kids that are from our district, right, as props, right? And these kids are innocent, right? Some of them are adults now, right? But what it is, is they're using these kids to push their agenda of division, right? So in this community, we love everybody. We were fighting during COVID for everybody. The Board you have, that you see now was elected by the community. So this Board here was fighting for everybody during COVID, everybody during lockdowns, right? To reopen schools. The kids lost about a year and a half of education, in-person education. Instead of us trying to catch up on what they lost, you know, on their, on their, you know, their essentials, right? You know, you know, trying to have them be better, you know, at, you know, at their math, at their curriculum. No, they're worried about some, some policy that's going to, you know, oust somebody. Everybody loves everybody here. Chino's a really good community. We don't, we don't throw anybody out. We love everybody and just remember that.
Thank you.
God bless you. Thank you.
Pat?
Karen Reyes, Karen, Karen Reyes, followed by Ben Richards, followed by Stephen P.
My name is Karen Reyes and I'm an intervention counselor at Don Lugo. I want to clear up lies about a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and our school to enhance our wellness room. Before I speak about the recent hysteria that has been created surrounding our wellness room, I would like to point out that on April 7th, 2022, Ms. Shaw spoke at a Board meeting saying her only concern about the wellness rooms was that we over-communicate to parents and students so that they know what is available to help them. At Lugo, we had a wellness center open house for parents and we did close to 60 presentations for students to introduce them to the wellness room. No other counselors in the district did that at their schools. Our Board of Education received an email June 15th of this year which explained that the Chamber of Commerce did not initiate this, the idea to add the private space to our wellness room. It was my idea. Our needs and we, and why we asked the Chamber to help us with the space was explained. The needs have nothing to do with abortion services. I do have evidence of the truth. For example, the WASC report dated two months before we met with the Chamber of Commerce. I met with the committee and discussed our needs and they wrote this as a recommendation into the report dated two months prior. This is public information. Ms. Shaw read the email on June 15th and responded asking to set up a meeting, although the hysteria and attacks had already started because the comments made at two previous Board meetings and social media posts that were already made. After asking to meet, Ms. Shaw again posted Instagram perpetuating false information. At this point, it was clear that Ms. Shaw was not simply misinformed, she was deliberately perpetuating, perpetuating a lie. I spoke at the Board meeting later that day. I was respectful despite knowing she had just perpetuated this lie about us. At the end of that night, instead of clearing up the lie, she doubled down on it. One of the comments made was that Chino Hills had better intentions when they created their space, yet she had never spoken with us. Ms. Shaw, since June 15th, you have chosen not to remove a post perpetuating this lie. It has attracted horrible attacks on innocent people, including myself. I know that there are also posts on private pages where your friends perpetuated these lies. Even after June 15th, when you knew the truth, you posted a screenshot of my post from a private Facebook group, group of something I purchased for the wellness center simply to harass me. You have gone from supposedly being concerned about this partnership due to lack of information to spreading misinformation to perpetuating a lie after receiving the truth on June 15th and then to harassing an employee who was simply speaking the truth. You have crossed a line. To the rest of this Board, I'm going to ask that someone have the integrity to tell the truth to our community. These lies victimized our students, the Chamber and staff at Don Lugo, including myself. In case you aren't aware, these lies about innocent people have put us in danger. I have screenshots of hundreds of ignorant, disgusting and scary posts. For the record, I'm not interested in meeting at this point. You have the truth. Thank you.
Richards. Ben Richards.
Pat?
Ben Richards. Ben Richards, followed by Stephen P., followed by Nick Para.
Logan, can you get Pat help? I think her microphone is not working.
Ben Richards.
I'm Ben Richards, a dad from San Diego. A year and a half ago, my kid's principal at San Diego Unified announced their new elementary school lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer club. I've never been against a club. I just want to know if they showed up, to any club for that matter. Why? There's six. They can be having discussions about their sexuality, being a bisexual, sexual attraction. I want to be involved in that. I want to follow up. I'm an involved dad. But I respectfully asked the principal to be notified and they said no. I go to my first Board meeting down in San Diego Unified, pull up, park, turn the corner, flying over the entrance is a Black Lives Matter flag, Juneteenth and a trans flag. And that's when I knew we had a systemic radical leftist indoctrination problem in our public education system that is so deep, any change would be insurmountable undertaking. The School Board ignored me and I was jeered at by the crowd. I couldn't sleep that night because I had one nagging thought in the back of my head and that is, anyone who wants to hide things from me about my little kids, you're no friend of mine. I felt alone, isolated and afraid. I reached out to neighboring parent groups and they had worse problems than me. Some of them gave me the cold shoulder, but I kept showing up and being an asset. I continued traveling around to help, realizing the same bully tactics that some of these districts are doing to them and the same people call them slurs like Nazi and bigot. It's the same in every district. I don't want to be here, but they try to hide things from me about my kids and they're doing it to these parents too. So come to find out, my story is their story. I'm a veteran and I become awestruck by the courage displayed by these parents behind me. They've been slurred, publicly defamed, their jobs and livelihoods targeted, threatened, attacked by Antifa in Glendale, targeted by outside agitators who seek to usurp their local power. And now they're sued by the governor of California who's going to take one and a half million dollars away from their kids. So fast forward a year and a half, now I'm a member of the Dad Army, the California Parents Union and the founder of SoCal Parent Advocates. Expose, challenge and resist CRT radical gender ideology and vaccine and masks here in our schools. And as of two months ago, we have worked with nearly every parent and activist group from the upper reaches of LA County to the southern border of San Diego to carry out our strategic imperative of supporting the local parent groups who are where the rubber meets the road. So I'm glad that Tony Thurman is here to listen to my story because you know what, Tony? We're growing, we're expanding and we're not going away. So I'm happy to see you're here. And we're not anti-LGB, we're not anti-trans, we're not hateful. But Tony, if you want these smut books in your school, for your kids, you go get them from Barnes and Noble and the public library, but you keep that in your own home. And if you want to hide things from parents, sir, that's where we draw the line. That's where we draw the line and we're not going to take it anymore. I'll see you at the podium.
Guys, do not make me clear the room. Come on. And please address the Board. Don't address the audience, please. Let's not clear the room because the next time I'm clearing the room and you guys know I'm serious. I've done it before. I've, we've had a break, but this time you're all going to exit out. So good luck on trying to get in because it's going to be hard. I'm not joking. Please.
Stephen P., followed by Nick Para, followed by Agnes Mazur.
Good evening, Board. President Shaw, it's an honor to be here today to speak in front of you. I went to many meetings where Ms. Shaw was there fighting for our children left and right and it's an honor that we voted you in and we're so glad that you're sitting in the position you are protecting our children. I wanted to speak today in regards to the wellness centers that are already inside 50 high schools in LA County. Fifty high schools where there are bridges directly run by Planned Parenthood. And if you're unaware, go look it up. Go look it up. There's 50 schools. They had a contract since 2019 to do 50 schools. Now that might not be the case yet here, but I'm glad you're watching. I'm glad you're paying attention. I'm glad you're not going to let that happen here. But more importantly, all these things, all these issues why we're here today, it all comes from the heart. And if your heart is not right before God, you got an issue today.
Guys, please.
You're going to stand before God one day. You can leave this place and get hit by a car on the way out and you're going to stand before God and you're going to have to answer for what it is that you did on this earth. You're going to have to give an account. The Bible says that. You will give an account. You will stand before God. And are you going to stand justified or are you going to stand guilty as a sinner? Now everyone has a way. There is one way. His name is Jesus. He is the way, the truth and the life and no one comes to the Father except through Him. There's a problem though. The Bible says that all have sinned and fallen short of the glory of God. If you've sinned one time, you have fallen short. And if you have, if you told a lie, if you've had lust in your heart, if you've coveted something to belong to someone else, if you've had, you name it, all those things are sins. And if you have one of them, it's going to keep you out of heaven. And so we want to share with you today, none of these issues are going to go away unless you have a change of heart. And so we pray for you. We pray for this Board. We pray for your families. We pray that God would continue to strengthen you as you stand in the face of opposition, as you stand in the face of Sacramento, as you stand in the face of legislation coming your way. It does not matter. It does not matter. You guys are standing strong for our children, and we're so thankful for you, and we're humbled to be here today. And I just want to continue to, to get my point across that if you do not know Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior, if you do not know Him personally, and you're not trusting in Him, there is going to be a day that you will meet Him. And so you have to put your faith and your trust in Him. You have to look to Him for your guidance and for your direction. You have to confess your sin and ask Him to be, to sit on the throne of your heart. You guys have a great day.
Nick Para, followed by Agnes Mazur, followed by Michelle Carney.
Thank you very much. Nick Para. My grandfather was a first immigrant here in Chino and grew up in Avila Park, near Avila Park. Very humble man, a man of Jesus. And I'm a descendant, and I'm very proud. As a former teacher, well, let's first do this. As a student, when I was in first grade, I used to love drawing rainbows. Turns out that as I got older, I was gay. Now, I'm glad my teacher was not forced to bring that to the surface or bring me out as a child. I loved drawing rainbows obsessively for some reason, but I'm glad that I wasn't forced to come out as a child. A child needs, has that sovereign right to decide to live and be accepted, and decide on their own and be accepted. That teacher, first grade teacher, Mr. Acosta, he embraced me, he cared, and he just accepted me. I hope that this, these decisions tonight reflect the professionalism of teachers like Mr. Acosta, who cared, and bridge a connection between teachers, administrators, and the parents. And there should be a process. But I do, I had a speech, but I didn't, I wanted to just tell my personal story, because there was a, there were some people who were manipulating me, but then there were some people who were nice and came up to me, and they were on the opposite side of me, but they were nice. So I think there is a way, and let's just consider that, and let's think of the professional process. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Agnes Mazur, followed by Michelle Carney, followed by Jess Hudson.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Enfield and Cabinet. I am the mother of two students in the district. As I watched the board meetings from home over the last few months, I heard this board majority repeatedly express their support for quote-unquote parental rights, generally as justification for policies that I and most of the parents I know do not support. So I looked into what this actually means. The term parental rights has been used widely by Christian nationalist political groups, some of whom are here today, and taken up and amplified by Moms for Liberty starting in 2021. Moms for Liberty started in Florida by women with deep ties to the far-right wing of the Republican Party. They have since been identified as an anti-government extremist group by the Southern Poverty Law Center, a civil rights organization that tracks extremism and hate. Moms for Liberty has spearheaded book bans, targeting books about people of color, and have tried to silence the truthful teaching about the role of race in our history. Most recently, they have pushed for policies that target LGBTQ+ students. They are also virulently anti-teacher and anti-union. As a school board candidate, Ms. Shaw signed a pledge that she would uphold Moms for Liberty beliefs, and this board majority is clearly aligned with them. The same resolutions, and even with the exact same wording, are showing up in school boards all over the country. Ms. Shaw has submitted a few herself. This is not a grassroots movement, but a highly coordinated and well-funded national political strategy. The problem with quote-unquote parental rights, as it is used by this board majority, is that it excludes the majority of us parents. Ms. Shaw has gone as far to say that those who do not support her resolutions are bad parents. Similarly, she has expressed her strong opposition to California Assembly Bill 1078, which is a bill currently under consideration in the state senate that gives students the right to curriculum that includes culturally and racially diverse perspectives. This law would also empower parents, allowing them to appeal to their county Board of Education if their local school board passes a book ban. That Ms. Shaw is strongly against this bill speaks volumes about which parents she believes should have rights and which parents she believes should not. Despite the claims of some members of this board, most parents do not support book bans and do want their children to learn diverse perspectives and honest history. We want school to be a welcoming and accepting place for all students, including our LGBTQ+ youth, and we very much support our students, children's teachers, and their union. We also definitely do not want our tax money meant for our children's schools to be wasted paying for fancy lawyers because the school board chooses to pass illegal policies that inevitably lead to lawsuits. We may not be the parents that come to every board meeting, but we do live and vote here, and we are paying attention.
Thank you so much.
Michelle Carney.
Pat?
Michelle Carney, followed by Jess Houson, followed by Barry LeBlanc.
Did I just move the table? It's like, it's just going down. Is that what it is? Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board tonight. I am the president of the Etowahda Teachers Association, but I do not come here to speak to you on behalf of my teachers. I'm here as an individual citizen. I watched online your last board meeting, and I was appalled to hear this board make derogatory comments about the teachers in this district and their union, and from what I heard, the counselors of the Wellness Center. You were elected to the school board to represent all members of the school district, which would include teachers, administrators, classified staff, the students, not just the parents. The reason I even mention that I am the president of the Etowahda Teachers Association is to say how incredibly blessed I feel to work with our school board. They not only support me as a teacher, they are also very complimentary of the teachers, of the teachers, but they also work with our Teachers Association for the betterment of our district. I encourage this district to, this board, excuse me, I encourage this board to follow their model. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Barry LeBlanc, followed by Lisa G. Jess Houson, followed by Barry LeBlanc, followed by Lisa G. Barry LeBlanc.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a taxpayer here in Chino, and I'm a Air Force veteran, retired veteran, and so I have a right to be here, because I am living here in Chino. The ABC group that's here, I don't know how many of them...
Dress us, please.
Well, I don't know how many from the ABC group actually live here. I know the leaders, some of the leaders don't.
I don't know.
Okay? That's fine. But there's a lot of people here from Chino, a lot of parents. And I wasn't able to speak last time because you guys ran out of time. And Mr. Bridge, you held up a Bible and said, "God is love." Well, do you really read your Bible? It also says, "God is a righteous judge," and that there's a standard.
What's your name?
And we've had this standard here for 247 years. The pilgrims came here from England for freedom, religious freedom. You know, we're all going to stand before God one day, okay? I don't, I don't hate the ABC group. I don't hate them. I love them as human beings, but their agenda that they're trying to push has nothing to do with math, English, history, and all the major subjects that I learned when I was in school, okay? They have no right to shove it down our kids' minds. They're molesting our kids' minds. And there's a, there's a head honcho from Sacramento, Mr. Thurman, that is going to try to persuade you. You don't work for him. You work for us. We pay the taxes. In fact, he can go back to Oakland where he's from, because he don't belong here. This is our meeting. You are our school board members that you, that we elected, and I'm glad we elected, because the prior president was their blanket, the other group, their security blanket. And she was run by Planned Parenthood. She was funded, but thank God that you won.
Thank you.
Jess Houson. Jess Houson. Jess Houson, followed by Barry LeBlanc, followed by Lisa G.
I come as a teacher and a resident of Chino with children enrolled in your school district. I come here imploring you to consider your constitutional obligation that you're sworn to uphold when you take the Positions Board, when you introduce policies and adopt policies for the teachers and the students of the school district. Your current proposed and adopted board policies are putting both yourself and teachers in a place that you're forced to violate your oath to uphold California's constitution, one we all take. In removing freedom of speech, implementing religious rights that are coming from a government authority, removing right to privacy and personal autonomy, all of which that are guaranteed in our California constitution, you're opening up the district to lawsuits. You're opening up teachers to be accused of harassment. And you know this, because you've seen it happen in districts like Chico. We're legally required to protect and keep accessible our school environments for everybody, that our students feel safe when they come into our classrooms, and that they can exercise their basic constitutional rights. I strongly encourage you, as you consider advancing more policies or continuing to adopt the policies that you have, that you evaluate the current climate and get out of your own echo chambers, and consider the culture, and then consider your policies through the lens of your constitutional obligation, and not through a social one. It's pretty clear and concise. Over 750 school districts in California disagree with your policies.
Thank you.
Barry LeBlanc. Barry LeBlanc.
Barry LeBlanc.
Barry LeBlanc, followed by Lisa G., followed by Virginia Renteria.
Guys, just a quick reminder, she's calling the names in threes, so please prepare yourselves so you can get here. We're trying to listen to as many as possible. We know this is going to be a long meeting, so please. Barry already talked.
Lisa G., Virginia Renteria, followed by Barbara Rudley.
I would like to apologize in advance to the students, teachers, and school staff here tonight, or watching these board meetings online. I can't imagine how demoralizing it must be, month after month, to listen to the distortions and misinformation from both board members and speakers, many of whom are coming from outside our community, accusing the dedicated people who work in education of indoctrinating and grooming students. It's no wonder why so many of the best and brightest in education are leaving our district. We hear over and over from this board that teachers are keeping secrets from parents. Every teacher my children ever had, and every teacher I know, have always expressed how much they wish parents would be more involved in their children's education. If you think they have the time, not to mention the desire, to indoctrinate your child to be gay or transgender, as if that's a thing, then you clearly haven't spent much time in a classroom. Our teachers want to focus on education, which is more than I can say for this board majority, which is clearly more interested in pushing their own political and religious agenda. And to those who think what's going on in their child's school is a secret, that's a fallacy. Want to see your child's school records or opt your children out of any reading assignments, sex ed, or any other program? That is your right. Want to review curriculum or a textbook? Just ask. And of course, schools already have policies in place for staff to identify, support, and refer students at risk of harming themselves or others. Make no mistake, what this board is pushing through now is just the tip of the iceberg. They are taking their cue from their megachurch, as well as a group called Moms for Liberty, that believes that they should be able to decide not just what their kids learn, but what every child learns. Next up is banning library books, sanitizing race-related history lessons, and anything else they decide is un-Christian. Never mind state laws that govern curriculum, these folks think they know better than education professionals. If you are convinced that public school teachers are not to be trusted, then why not homeschool or put your child into private school? Of course, most of these efforts will be overturned in court, so we need to ask ourselves whether we want our taxpayer dollars going to lawyers to fight unwinnable battles, much the same way this district blew more than $300,000 fighting a lawsuit because Mr. Cruz and Mr. Nah couldn't stop themselves from proselytizing from the dais. This group wants a legal fight because they have nothing to lose and want to be seen as martyrs in their church, while they gradually dismantle our public education system and try to replace it with a voucher system that will have taxpayers picking up the tab for religious schools. This is already happening in other parts of the country. Let's remember, there's a reason why public education is called the great equalizer. It's designed for all students and must be protected. Thank you.
Followed by Barbara Rudley, followed by Linda Frazier. That's, that's Ms. Renteria.
Good evening, Board, and thank you, parents that have shown up, Lord. I just want to apologize to Sonya. I just thank you so much for your bravery. You were in your position because we, the parents, like we, the people, have had enough of the garbage. I come up here, I don't need a little army of, "Woo-hoo, stand with your leader here." I don't need that, because I stand before the Lord, and we're, it's obvious. It's obvious that we're looking at a spiritual battle right now. These demons are after our children. They are after our children. California, California, like most of America, is dumbing down our kids. Some of the literature that's in the schools in elementary, me as a manager, I was a manager for over 10 years, if I discussed what some of these kids are being approached with, I would be hauled into HR for sexual harassment. And that's an adult. Parents here have had enough. We are standing strong, we are standing proud, and I'll tell you, we're on the right side of this battlefield, because the Lord is right there in front of us, and we will not back down. And I just think that we should be focused more on getting our children better prepared. In Asia, China, those kids can outsmart our kids, sadly. We are having some major problems, and yet we have lunatics that come here and fight for individuality of being whatever. I'm not against anything. If you're gay, lesbian, I don't care, that's your choice. That's, you know, if you want to be a, if you're a boy, you're born a boy, and you want to be a girl, that's your, your delusion. Don't, don't force the delusion onto us.
Put on order, please.
Yes, just basically, leave our children alone, because this battle is far from being over. It's obvious that we're going to have to have our school board meetings here every, every time, because we're getting more and more people, more and more coming up, because a lot of parents are shocked at what is going on. They can't actually believe it. So I just thank you, and I know that we are on the right side of this spiritual battle for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we see, before we hear the next speaker, Pat, we're at our 30 minutes. How many more speakers do we have? Five more speakers. Board, do I have a consensus? I'll take it by each individual board member. Mr. Bridge? Mr. Monroe? Ami Yes? Mr. Cruz? We have Mr. Nah. We have the majority. We'll continue to listen to the five speakers. Please stay on topic. If it is about the policy, let's keep it. If it is about the policy, let's keep it for that time.
Barbara Rudley followed by Lisa Fraser followed by Jess Enos.
My name is Barbara Rudley. That was a good guess. And representing the League of Women Voters of Mount Baldy area, I'm here tonight to introduce you to our new observer. This is Gina Trexler Susap, sorry, and she begins her work tonight. The purpose of the Corps of Observers is just to observe, not speak out, not question except for clarification. You have not been singled out to have an observer. There are two other school districts that have observers, or four city councils, and so on. The purpose of the observer is to observe and to report back and open up the awareness and appreciation of what our elected officials do. And now I'm going to give you a chance to hear Gina. It might be the last time you hear her voice in the room.
Thank you to the board. Thank you, Dr. Enfeld. I just want to just take a moment of your time to give a brief introduction. I know it's a busy evening. I was born in Louisiana. I moved to Chino Hills, California, when I was eight years old. I have attended public schools in CVUSD for my entire career. I then attended Mountain SAC and later Cal State Fullerton. I have a bachelor's and a master's degree in history from there. And in addition to serving as the secretary for the League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area, I have also had the opportunity to serve on the Claremont Parent Faculty Association, the Sycamore Elementary Governance Council, and served as a voting member of the Sycamore School Site Council. Both of my children attend public schools in Claremont at this time. I was employed in the '21-'22 school year as a library and media assistant at Glenn Mead, where I thoroughly enjoyed working with the staff and students at the site. I am proudly related to three employees at work in various departments here in CVUSD, and I currently work as the office manager at Sycamore Elementary in Claremont. And as Barbara said, this will probably be the last time you hear my voice. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Linda Fraser followed by Jess Enos followed by Manook Dridj Ryan.
I spelt salad dressing on my notes, so bear with me. Anyways, I'm Linda Fraser. Good evening, Mrs. Shaw, school board members, and community. I'm sorry. Is that better? I'm a citizen of this city since 1959. I do not have children in the school, but I'm a concerned citizen. I will have great grandchildren, though. I have served God for 42 years. I love God. I heed God. I'm here because of what I heard in the last month's meetings. School board, you are here in these positions because God did this. I know your heart is to protect children. There's division here. One side wants one thing, the other side wants their agenda. Well, something has to give. I listened to a pastor say at the board meeting last month that God is love. Yes, true, but what they left out is God is truth. He gave us His word. He gave the Bible instructions for all children. He gave us two great commandments. You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart and with all your soul and with all your mind. This is the great and first commandment, and a second is like it. You shall love your neighbor. Most of you-
Actually, that is another outburst. Remove yourself right now. Remove yourself right now. Remove yourself right now. Stand up and remove yourself. You are out. Remove yourself right now. You disrupted a public meeting. You spoke out. Remove yourself right now. Right now. Sorry, Linda, we'll pause your time. We're not moving forward until you remove yourself. You've done more than enough outbursts, and I've been more than patient with you. She's out. That was not her first one. I looked her straight in the eyes when she yelled something. Remove yourself. Remove yourself. We are not moving forward until you leave. Thank you. Guys, can you please settle down? The noise is remove themselves, and I don't want to have to remove other people. Guys, order. She needs to speak. Let's give her the respect. This is her time to speak. Go ahead, Linda.
Most of you know the golden rule is do unto others as you would have them do unto you. You don't win battles by name-calling, trashing people with disgusting slurs. So who's my neighbor? People who do not agree with me because I love them, I have to tell them the truth. God made a man and a woman, nothing more, nothing less. He designed us in His image to tell children that they may be another gender is against God. I do not want to stand before God and say I did nothing to protect children. A man and a woman can procreate. A man and a man cannot. A woman and a woman cannot. A transgendered woman cannot get pregnant. There's a website, transregret.com. Why? Because transgendered life is not God's answer. What is a woman? She is created in the image of God. She is a helpmeet to her husband, and she bears children. The devil in the Garden of Eden told Eve a truth along with a lie. The devil has not changed his tactics. Today, the same thing. The devil is behind the lies. The devil is after your children. The Colorado Springs shooter identified as non-binary. The Denver shooter identified as trans.
And we will not proceed until you leave. So leave right now. You cannot hide behind a sign. Thank you and have a nice night. Please remove yourself. Guys, please ignore the noise. Let's get on topic because I don't want our board to decide. They don't want to hear all those comments on a matter where you guys are all at. Remember, I gave my word, but the board did not give their word. So let's figure this out together. Let's get them out. If you're going to yell, if you're going to yell, just stand up, yell, and then leave. You're more than welcome to do that. Just leave after.
The next speaker is Jess Enos followed by Manook G., followed by Timothy Johnson.
Hi, my name is Jess. I am the leader of Antelope Valley Parents for Education. We are here to support those of you on this board and those parents in this community that are fighting for their children against the sexualization of our children. You are fighting for them.
Guys, let her speak.
You are the heroes of this school district. This state and nation are watching you. You have ignited the fire in many across this nation to rise up and believe that this fight is something that can be won. You are causing a ripple effect, and you should be proud of what you are doing. In this fight, I am constantly reminded of the story of the grasshoppers and the ants. We are the ants in this story. We are many, we are mighty, we are powerful. The second more parents realize that they have more power than they truly believe, we will be unstoppable, a force to be reckoned with. So we see you, we hear you, we support you. Keep up the fight. We, the people, have your back, and with the almighty God by our side, nothing is going to stop us.
Next speaker, please approach the podium.
Grid Ryan followed by Timothy Johnson followed by the final speaker, Nicolette V. Manook.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, parents. Thank you, America, and thank you for all the men and women serving under this flag across our great nation and making this country safe for immigrants like me. Anybody doesn't like America or anybody doesn't like this flag-
Address the board.
...has a problem with me. America is the greatest country, and the LGBTQ plus IEA crowd has been numerous times chanting dead to America, dead to Christian fascists. They want to burn the American flag. That's not American. That's terrorist talk. That's evil talk. I will not stand for that. I will fight for my country and for this flag with all my might, and now they want to come and after my kids. Oh, no, no, not the kids. You cannot touch the kids. America has to realize that child slavery, child trafficking, child pornography, it's all pedophilia. I don't care how soft words you put it, it's downlying pedophilia. And if we don't wake up as parents and fight for our kids, these are our kids, not your kids. I'm fighting for my kids. I have four beautiful daughters in LAUSD, and I'm fighting for the same thing that these parents are fighting. Leave our kids alone. This is our kids.
Let him speak.
I get to decide what my kids' future should be, and if for some goddamn reason that my children want to be lesbian or gay, that will be up to me to talk to my own kids, not the USD, not the school, not the teachers. I should be the one to consult my children. Nobody else has the right to say what I can or cannot teach my children, just like I'm not pushing my family values on anybody, I don't want them to push it on my family. And my family is Christian-based family, and I love my God, and I love my neighbors, and we can only be tolerant so much. You cannot expect us to give you my children and you do what you want with them. No, that's not going to happen. You could be in my sports, you could be in my clothes, you could be in my drinks, you could be in my cars. I don't care, but you better leave my kids alone. These are my kids, and I will defend my kids, my flag, and my country with all the might that I have. And I want to thank all the men in the Blues who are guaranteeing our safety. Thank you, officers. You are the best protection we have, and they're taking for granted that the freedom this country is providing them. They want social communism. You want communism? Go to North Korea. Go there. Get out of here. You don't like this country? You're more than welcome to leave. I will buy your plane ticket one way. Go anywhere you want.
Address the board.
I guarantee you. My name is Manook Krigorian, and I'm a proud father of four beautiful girls in Sadiqo Elementary School. Thank you. You're doing a great job. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Timothy Johnson.
We have two more speakers. The next speaker, please approach the podium.
Timothy Johnson followed by Nicolette V.
All right. Hello, Board. Thank you for hearing us tonight. I appreciate all of what you guys are doing, and I want to talk tonight. You know, I do men-on-the-street videos with Red Liberty Media, and I spoke to a woman once, and I asked her if men could get pregnant, and she said yes. And I then asked her, you know, if I believe I'm a dinosaur, does that make me a dinosaur? And she said, oh, I'm not a doctor. And the point of this is, I asked her then, you know, if I'm on a 50-foot-tall building and I believe that I'm transgravitational, and I jump off the building, will I fall? In other words, if I jump off that building and I sincerely believe that I'm transgravitational and gravity has no effect, what's going to happen? There is reality, and the reality is God has created each one of us, male and female, in His own image. And the truth is, you held up the Bible and said, "God is love," Mr. Bridge, and He is. And 1 Corinthians 13 says, "God is love, but love is patient, love is kind." But it also says, "Love does not rejoice in unrighteousness, but rejoices with the truth." And so if you are rejoicing with unrighteousness, as God has said, you are not loving. You are actually going against God. You know, the truth is, someone was speaking about, you know, black history, and I believe we should learn about black history. Lemuel Haines, James Armistead, Frederick Douglass, how about these great Americans of the past? And let me read you something because Lemuel Haines was a Minuteman, and then he became a pastor, and he actually preached at George Washington's birthday. He loved George Washington. And here's what he said. "It is God alone that slays the native enmity of the heart, that takes away those evil dispositions that govern man, and takes away the heart of stone and gives a soft heart and makes him, that was a hater of God, an enemy of God, to become a friend of His divine character. This was not wrought by any efficiency of man or by any external motives or by any light that led into the understanding but of God. Hence we receive Christ and are born, not of blood, not of the flesh, nor of the will of man, but of God." And the truth is, we are all sinners, and we will all stand before God one day, and that's why we need the blood of Jesus to forgive us of our own sins. And so I implore each one of us here to make sure we are right with Him, because one day we will stand before Him. There's no getting around that. God bless you all.
Thank you.
The final speaker is Nicolette V.
I appreciate the gravity of your positions and the hard it takes to hold those seats. I want to speak for a moment as an American woman. I am not my skin. You are not your skin, and I refuse to not protect children from believing that they are. I am not, nor have I ever been oppressed. I am not, nor have I ever been a victim. For those who would say that I have been and just didn't know it, my response to that is that my parents raised me while in the South, after experiencing real racism themselves, to not allow my past to have power over my present or my future. This current culture only wants to hear from those who have experienced racism or prejudice at the hands of white people and then proceed to monopolize on it to make the world think it's the majority. I myself am a Southern gal. Born and raised in Alabama, I was placed in gifted classes because of my own merits. My teachers worked closely with my parents at all times to make sure that my intelligence beyond my grades were encouraged and deeply supported. I'm a hair and makeup artist in a severely saturated career field and still managed to have my chosen prices never questioned and paid for in full, never having to pay for promotions, building my clientele solely off the back of my reputation. The racism that I've seen the majority of my 38 years of life has come from bitterness and unforgiveness of the past, which always is going to be unsuccessful towards those who have been dead longer than I've been alive. Culture has been tricked into believing that degeneracy, promiscuity, and self-love is freedom, when they are actually the chains that keep us bound, tricked into believing that, and tricked into now enslaving ourselves, and I refuse to be in silence. I refuse to sit back and allow politicians to weaponize familial and community issues for campaign visibility and votes and literally never follow through on their promises for our communities. None of us are our past, and none of us are our ancestors. Whether you agree with me or not, I will continue to fight for your freedoms. I will continue to fight to free you from mental and emotional slavery. I will continue to fight for you and your families because contrary to popular belief, God's true children don't hate anybody. I urge you to have conversations with those that differ from you, to seek to understand and to try to build bridges and fill the gaps together. To all you parents, God has set watchmen upon the walls which shall never hold their peace, nor day nor night. Those that make mention of the Lord keep not silent, and to those in the body of Christ, disciples of Jesus, if God's people, which are called by His name, would humble themselves and pray and seek His face and turn from their wicked ways, then will He hear from heaven, and will forgive our sin and will heal our land. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes all our comments on non-agenda items. We're going to move on to changes and deletions. We're now at changes and deletions. Pat, are there any changes or deletions?
The following changes are on the agenda. Item 2B1, page 15, addendum to the employment contract for the superintendent of the Chino Valley Unified School District is pulled from the agenda, and item 2B2, page 17, addendum to the employment contracts for Associate Superintendent Business Services, Associate Superintendent Curriculum Instruction Innovation and Support, and Assistant Superintendent Facilities Planning and Operations is pulled from the agenda. There are no further changes or deletions.
Thank you so much, Pat. We're now on to item 2A1. New Board Policy 5,020.1, parental notification. Recommend the Board of Education approve the new board policy, 502.0.1, parental notification. Pat, how many speakers do we have?
83 requests to speak.
Do you want to do or no? Okay. Thank you so much, Pat. First, I'll go over the procedure for this item. Attorney, our attorney, Tony DiMarco, from Atkins &amp; Andelson, lawyer, rude and romo, will explain the legal principles related to this policy before he begins. I'll ask for a motion and a second. We will hear from Mr. DiMarco. Members can ask clarifying questions or wait until the board discussion, which will take place after public comments. Once board discussion is over, I will call for the vote. Now, regarding the large number of requests to speak, we have a couple of options. Board by law, 9323, authorizes changes to public input under exceptional circumstances, provided there is board consensus. If we don't have consensus, then we'll revert to the 30-minute time limit. So we can extend the 30-minute time limit for public input at three minutes each to a time indefinite, or we can adjust the three-minute per-speaker time down to one minute per-speaker and agree to a time, or agree to another time limit. Again, if we can't reach a consensus, or on either of those, we will revert back to the 30-minute time limit. Now... Oh, sorry, Mr. Monroe, go ahead.
Madam President, I'd like to put to the board, is it 83 speakers?
Yes.
If we have 83 speakers, can we limit time to each speaker to one minute? That allows us to hear every speaker?
Yes. Yes.
If you allow the normal three minutes, we're looking at four hours. We'll have to cut off everybody.
We're trying to...
We're only be able to hear a limited amount of speakers. You all waited in 100-degree weather. I'd rather hear from all of you for one minute than half of you for three.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. So I will take consensus. Do we have consensus to hear all the speaker cards returned into Pat right now and reduce the time from three minutes to one minute? I will... Mr. Bridge? Mr. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz? Mr. Nah?
One minute?
What if we go one and a half minutes?
We... Do you want to do? If you speak out one more time, you're going to leave. We're trying to do our board business, and you're being very rude. You either have to take the vote that down, and then we can bring one minute, one and a half minutes on the... We already have consensus. Okay. So...
consensus.
Is it a yes or no, Mr. Nah?
I would say no, because I'd like to have at least one and a half minutes.
And I'm a no, but we do have consensus, so we will reduce them from three minutes to one minute, so we can hear all of the speakers tonight. Please adjust right now. You'll have a time, because Tony DiMarco is going to do his presentation before, so you can kind of work with whatever you were going to say. Now, as a reminder, please refrain from heckling or commenting from your seats when people are at the podium. The room will be cleared if disorderly conduct renders safety at risk or hinders the board's ability to conduct its business. As a further caution, unruly behavior will not be tolerated, as we already visibly showed you. And the board will recess until order is maintained. And I will remind you, please do not do that, because you have consensus to list in one minute. You guys are going to just have to sit here longer and keep exiting in and out. With that, may I have a motion to put Mr. DiMarco?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Second by Mr. Cruz. Mr. DiMarco, you're more than welcome to begin your presentation. And thank you so much for being here for us.
Good evening, trustees and members of the community. First, I want to lower expectations. Calling this a presentation, I think, sets me up. I want to take it down, just have a few comments, if I can, on the legal principles associated with the anticipated consideration of the parental notification policy. So the first thing that I'd like to point out is, boards all over the state are going through the same consideration of policies. And I'm addressing this with many of my clients, to one extent or another. The boards in those communities are making difficult choices on what information to share with parents. A lot of the districts are considering guidance that was put out by the California Department of Education in a Frequently Asked Questions document. So that document related to AB 1266, which, as you may recall, allowed students to select, based on their gender identity, which sex segregated programs to participate in, sex segregated activities, and facilities. So the student was given the right by law to choose which facilities, programs, et cetera, that they were going to participate in based on their gender identity. The CDE put out guidance through this FAQ, which addressed AB 1266. But for one of the points that they put in there, it talked about whether parents have the right to be notified of their students if they select these sex segregated programs, activities, or facilities. And the CDE looked at various areas of law that I'll go through, and they determined that parents do not have that right. So that was in their guidance. But as you may know, I'm sure you know, there's a hierarchy of laws in both the federal and state. And the guidance that was put out by the CDE is not actually law. It's just that, it's a guidance. So some districts, many districts, are following the guidance. Other districts are picking some other rule that they adopt locally. So at consideration, you've heard another speaker eloquently say that one of the things referred to in the guidance is the California Constitution's right to privacy. And that's a blanket right to privacy, applicable to all Californians. And the argument is, it should apply to kindergarteners all the way up through 12th grade. Some boards are looking at that and saying, well, kindergarteners might be too young to make certain decisions, and they go with a parent right notification. So a parental notification right, rather. The second thing that we always make sure we acknowledge is, there are very specific statutes with respect to counseling services. Counselors who are working with age 12 and over students may not disclose confidential information that is provided to them while a student is receiving counseling from the school counselor. And a school counselor is very broadly defined under the law. You're familiar with them in your schools. If a student age 12 or older tells a counselor while receiving counseling services that they want to use different bathrooms, that they consider themselves transgender, gender noninforming, binary, whatever it is that is their gender identity, that counselor must respect that student's privacy by law. In the proposed policy, there is a very specific reference that says, this board, this district, will follow any specific statutes. This is an example of a specific statute that the board and the district must follow. So counselors may not disclose that confidential information without the student's consent. Again, that student's 12 or older. So what would be disclosed, and when would it be disclosed under this policy? So we focus on, and we had a conversation yesterday with school administrators during an advanced workshop. What is required? When are we going to expect employees to provide this notification to parents? And there's action items. If a student requests to be identified or treated as a gender, other than their biological sex or gender listed on their official records. If they're requesting to use a name that differs from their legal name, except for nicknames. If they request to change their pronouns. If they want to use or go with sex segregated programs, activities, and sports that do not align with their biological sex or gender. So these are action items. This is not a mere conversation. This is not a statement by a student, "I'm questioning, I'm curious." It's got to be action items. If a staff member is asked to do something on behalf of a student that is covered in one of those action items, then it would be, it would trigger the parental notification. Again, I want to reflect back on, except if that is information that is shared with a counselor, and the student is 12 and older. So we've heard conversation about the Chico case, Chico Unified. They have a policy that is substantially different than the one for consideration tonight by your board. That district went in a different direction and adopted a student privacy policy. A parent sued, claiming that they had a constitutional right to notification, so that they can meaningfully participate in this aspect of their child's life. The court didn't really rule one way or another on whether parents should have notice. Instead, what the court said was, "The issue before the court is not whether it is a good idea for school districts to notify parents of a minor's gender identity and receive consent before using alternative names, pronouns, but whether the United States Constitution mandates such authority. This court holds that it does not." So what the court said is, this is not in the Constitution. Obviously, there's a federal constitution that has a right to privacy in it, a parallel to our state constitution. That court said, "There's nothing in the Constitution that speaks one way or the other, so I'm staying out of it." So when we reflect on some of the laws that are in the FAQ, or referred to in the FAQ, you have stuff like the state constitution's right to privacy, the state constitution's right to save schools, it refers to anti-discrimination laws, and it refers to student safety, which is a paramount concern for everyone. But it doesn't actually say in the FAQ that this is mandated by law, or that it's prohibited by law. It is simply something that our state legislature needs to take up. One other point that I wanted to address in the proposed policy is that there's specifically been added that no student should be referred home, no parental notification should be made, if there is a reasonable suspicion that child abuse or child neglect could take place as a result. So that's a very clear prohibition on the parent notification, and it's well-grounded in the law. All school district staff are mandated reporters. If they form a reasonable suspicion of child abuse or neglect, they are mandated by law to make a report. If such a report is made based on what a student says, for example, "I'm transgender, I want to transition, I need your help, I think my dad will hurt me if he finds out," then that would trigger a mandated report to be filed with CPS. This policy is very explicit that no parental notification would be made in those conditions. So that summarizes the law as it stands right now. And the last thing that I'll point out is, the policy, as adopted, does say that you will follow, in this district, any specific statutes on point with respect to parental notification. And I believe if the legislature does follow through with the parent notification bill or law, that we will be amending or adjusting our processes to ensure this district's in full compliance with the law. Any questions?
Is there any questions, board members? No? Any discussion, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to make one comment. I appreciated you coming here. And also, just so the public knows, too, he did a presentation for our principals, so they're fully aware of it and how to implement it. Thank you, Dr. Enfield, for making sure that happened, because we just don't, I'm never going to propose a policy to throw it out there without making sure that it has the means behind it to do something with it. So thank you. We're now at speakers. Pat?
Tony Thurman.
One second, Pat. Cruz, we don't have to use the clock, because that's programmed for three minutes, and unfortunately, we're old-school until our new district office gets built. Dr. Enfield is going to keep the time. And when you have 10 seconds left, he's going to raise his hand, so you have a visual, knowing that your time is almost up, so that way you can finish it up. Sorry, Pat, go ahead.
The first speaker is Tony Thurmond.
Please be respectful on both sides, both sides. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, parents, teachers, and students. I stand before you as a proud American, as a man of faith, the son of a veteran who served in Vietnam, who is buried not far from here. I love this country. And in addition to being the state superintendent, I am also a parent. And I come before you as a parent tonight. And we can debate all of the laws and all of the policies and practices. I ask you to consider this, that nearly half of students who identify as being LGBTQ+ are considering suicide. I ask you to consider this, that the policy that you consider tonight not only may fall outside of the laws that respect privacy and safety for our students, but may put our students at risk, because they may not be in homes where they can be safe.
Time. 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 And I learned something from a previous board president. Guys, be respectful. I am going to do a point of order, which I learned from a previous board president. Tony Thurmond, I appreciate you being here tremendously. But here's the problem. We're here because of people like you. You're in Sacramento proposing things that pervert children. You had a chance to come and talk to me, Tony. By all means, you had a chance to come talk to me. Why was it so important for you to walk with my opponent? You are the very reason why we're in this.
May I have, as a point of order, as the board president...
Point of order, this is not your meeting. You may have a seat, because if I did that to you in Sacramento, you would not accept it. Please sit. You're not going to blackmail us. You already sent us a blackmailing letter on previous things. You will not bully us here in Chino. Please sit. In Chino. We're going to take a five-minute break. We have one down, 82 to go. I'm going to reconvene the regular meeting. Please bring it down, guys. We got to get through this. We're going to reconvene. Everybody sit down, please. Be quiet. Pat?
The next speaker is Bill Assaly. Bill Assaly, followed by Sunitha Menon, followed by Maxi Barra. Bill Asalee, followed by Sunita Menon, followed by Max Ibarra.
Thank you.
Ready?
Begin.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me just say one thing. Mr. Thurmond was granted more respect and decorum than I ever have been by the supermajority Democrats in Sacramento. I introduced Assembly Bill 1314 to have this exact conversation, an open dialogue, to have a legislative deliberative process. They would not even hear my bill because they said it was too hateful without even having a conversation. That is wrong, but that's why our founding fathers had the wisdom to create the system of government that we have, where most power is reserved to local governments. And we do not have the power to change laws in Sacramento, but we sure enough have the power at the local level. So thank you for bringing this proposition, for this board position. Let me talk about facts very quickly. We care deeply, we cared-
Let him speak.
We care deeply about, I can't speak over them. We care deeply about every student regardless of how they identify. Let's talk-
Thank you.
Sunita Menon, followed by Max Ibarra, followed by Ashley Peters.
My name is Sunita Menon, and I'm the Managing Director of Operations for Equality California, the nation's largest LGBTQ+ civil rights organization. In the stated letter that was sent to you by Executive Director Tony Huang earlier today, Equality California strongly opposes this board policy 5020.1. The proposal is extremely dangerous and not aligned with recommendations from the California Department of Education, nor is it aligned with best practices for supporting students' success and health. This policy creates a culture of mistrust, not only between LGBTQ students, but for all students. By passing a proposal like this one, you are telling students that their privacy does not matter and that there is no trust and no support system in the people they see every day. Study after study has shown those students who have affirming environments at school are less likely to miss school, less likely to have depression, less likely to have seriously suicide, considered suicide in the past year.
Your time is up.
Max Ibarra, Max Ibarra, followed by Ashley Peters, followed by Kristi Hurst.
Can I start?
Yeah, when you start, I'll start the clock.
Okay. This policy is dangerous. Fifty-two percent of trans kids feel accepted at school while only 35% feel accepted at home. That leaves a large gap there of kids who feel welcome at school but not at home. Feeling safe at school lessens suicide risk. If a student isn't out to their parents, this shoves them in the closet at school. That's a miserable place to be. I am tired of the idea that all parents love and support their children unconditionally. That is not true. There are evil people in this world, and some of them have children. Shocking, I know. Some prefer a dead child to a trans child. There's another link, this is just another link in the chain that is Cruz and Nod's legacy of dangerous agenda items with legal implications that cost this district thousands of dollars that should have been spent keeping students safe, but no, we don't do that. Instead, CVUSD wastes it here. You could say you care for every student, but it doesn't change the fact that action speaks louder than words. And this action tonight is telling me I don't belong. And real quick, Monroe, you set out a forced outing policy that you disagree with that because it doesn't say anything against your lifestyle. This policy threatens my safety. That is what tells me I don't belong. A yes vote paints blood on your hands, and it's disgusting that either-
Time is up.
Ashley Peters, Ashley Peters, followed by Kristi Hurst. Ashley Peters, followed by Kristi Hurst, followed by Phoenix Guiza.
Good evening. I'm the parent of a current CVUSD student, a public school educator with 22 years of experience. I'm deeply troubled by the parent notification directive proposed by the school board. The proposed policy is a flagrant attempt to isolate shame and otherwise alienate our LGBTQIA students, creating a hostile environment for them in our public schools. As a resident of Chino, whose taxes go to this district, I'm extremely concerned about the board's reckless pursuit of personal agendas regardless of legality that will result in expensive lawsuits and fines from the state. Given recent rulings, the board should abandon any further discussion of this policy and get back to the critical work of supporting the students, teachers, and staff of CVUSD. Our public schools are already underfunded. Implementing policies that will be challenged in court and overturned will make it more difficult to hire and retain highly qualified teachers, limit student access to textbooks, classroom materials, and field trips, and will negatively impact our ability to employ counselors, coaches, librarians, and other essential support staff. You've abandoned your duty to ensure our students have access to the best possible public education in order to proliferate your own insidious moral judgment. This overt disregard for your responsibilities as school board members is abhorrent and makes it clear the majority of you are unfit to hold your position.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Kristi Hurst, followed by Phoenix Guiza, followed by Daniel Mora.
I am Kristi Hurst, the co-founder of the national nonprofit Our Schools USA. I am a lifelong Chino resident. I attended first through 12th grade in this district. I was a teacher in this district for 14 years. I am a current parent of three kids in this district. I love my kids' schools, their teachers, their administrators and counselors. I know this community, I know this district. The things you are claiming are happening are lies. Our teachers do not have nefarious intentions. Our school staff does not have the goal of keeping secrets. Your policy proposal is built on nothing but lies. Educating children works best with engaged parents, caring teachers, working together to create a safe space for all children to learn. This policy breaks down trust between parents, teachers, and students and exposes our most vulnerable students. Policies like this break down relationships. They foster a climate of distrust, and they make all kids feel less safe. Kids cannot learn if they do not feel safe, period. All you're going to accomplish is get this district sued, caught up in lawsuits that are going to cost the hard-working Chino Valley residents their taxpayer dollars. This district is not your device or personal checkbook to advance-
Time is up.
Thank you.
Phoenix, Phoenix Guiza, followed by Daniel Mora, followed by Kuki Cabrera.
Good evening, school board, good evening, school board members and Superintendent Enfield. My name is Phoenix Guiza, and I'm an incoming senior at Chino High School. I am here today to speak out against this policy the school board has introduced. This policy is absolutely unnecessary and will cause more harm than good. Outing trans kids before they are ready will cause such great harm to them, especially if they know their parents are not supportive. As a member of the LGBTQ community, I know how much, how hard it is to come out as a child. This policy will destroy the lives of kids who should not have to live in fear for being their true selves. Instead of causing this damage to children, instead of focusing on other things like the special education program. I was in special education from first grade all the way up to my freshman year of college, I mean, high school. And I confidently say that it needs to be fixed. All of your guys' time and energy should go to solving things and especially the problems going on throughout our school. Special education kids are often overlooked and-
One second, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we had some hitting over there, so we got to take care of this. And I saw it.
How much time do I have left?
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds. We'll make sure you get those 10 seconds. I'm sorry.
We do.
You ready?
I don't know who brought them.
All right, go ahead and begin.
Special education kids are often overlooked. If you truly cared about helping kids, you should not pass this policy. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Daniel Mora, followed by Kuki Cabrera, followed by Oscar Avila.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Enfield, and the Chino Valley community. My name is Daniel Mora, and I'm a recent graduate from Chino High School. I come at peer in opposition to this illegal, transphobic policy. With introducing this policy once again, the whole community now knows that not only is the school board ignorant, but evil as well. Outing trans kids before they are ready is one of the most dangerous things that anyone can do. And passing this policy, you tell trans kids that their lives do not matter, and you're placing an immense burden on teachers. Not once in my 12 years here in this district or in anyone I know have witnessed teachers encouraging kids to be transgender. You know this is a lie, yet you still claim it is happening. Teachers are overworked and underpaid, so what makes you think they have time to transition students? You will be liable for all the harm that will be inflicted upon the most vulnerable youth in our community. Protect all kids and not just the ones you want to. If you truly cared about students in this, about students in this whole community, you would not pass this policy. Thank you.
Kuki Cabrera, Kuki Cabrera, followed by Oscar Avila, followed by Kristi.
For the speakers that are behind the next speaker, please line up in the back so you can just approach the podium so we can do this in order fashion.
Kuki Cabrera, Oscar Avila.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Kofi Cabrera. In regard to this policy, you need to be aware that the people who are advocating for the rights of parents are getting tunnel vision and becoming fixated on their own righteousness, that they are unable to be compassionate or empathetic towards the people that will suffer from this policy. I am a survivor of many years of abuse. My own mother made me question my own safety on a daily basis. Not only would she openly threaten my life, but she heavily vilified the LGBTQ+ community. The day I found out I was bisexual was the same day I started a draft for my suicide note. At the time, I thought, why not just be my mom to the punch? I thought that if my sexuality were to ever be made public or made aware to my mother, then I would die. While I am in a safer place now, the years of torment I had gone through is not an uncommon story among the LGBTQ+ youth. This statement, my right as a parent, is incredibly exasperating. If my parents, if parents really wanted to know what's going on in their kids' lives, then it's their job as a parent to create that bond and relationship. It is not something you are entitled to just because you raised them. If you're truly looking out for the student's best interest, then you will not pass this item. It will be, it will put multiple students at risk, and why put even just one in irreversible and detrimental situation? Thank you.
Oscar Avila, followed by Kristi, followed by Sam V.
Okay, board, we are here today because our kids are in danger, and they're in danger by groomers, okay? Earlier in the year, when the first, years first started, the Chino University School sent out a brochure talking about, give us your pronouns, right? And then this thing, it instructs teachers how to have a separate file, right, with the kids' preferred gender name, preferred like, whatever they wanted to do, right? So it's an instruction, a book, and a separate file for the students, right? A few months ago, right, Brenda Walker over there, right, from ACT, right? She sent, sent information, a questionnaire, right, to the teachers, should you, should you, so we agree on having the kids, having the parents notified of their gender. She asked the teachers, right, asked the parents, Brenda, right? And here's another letter, right, from the union, right, from the CTA and ACT, right? Talking about, talking about, if you do this, right, you're going to get sued. This is a threatening letter to the board, right? So the groomers here, the danger here is the union and Brenda Walker, right? And even that, that midget Thurmond, right, that was here, right? These people are the ones that are coming against the children, right?
Let him speak.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Kristi-
Thank you.
Kristi, followed by Sam V, followed by Amane S. Kristi?
Hi, my name is Kristi, and I'm a former CVUSD student who is extremely concerned about this policy. Outing kids is never okay. School is the only safe space that some of these students have, and only about 35% of trans students feel safe at home. So taking away that space will only cause harm to these students. As well as this policy being dangerous for trans youth, this policy violates California Education Code 49602, which states, "Any information of a personal nature disclosed by people 12 years of age or older in the process of receiving counseling from a school counselor as specified in Section 49600 is confidential. And a gender identity and sexuality do not fall under the subsections that allow for disclosure. Therefore, by law, you are not allowed to disclose a student's gender identity or sexuality without any, without a student's explicit consent." Shaw, Nah, Cruz, and Monroe, you all know this. You abide by this education code as well. And you know this policy isn't helping anyone, not students, not teachers, and not parents. You could be using thousands of taxpayer dollars to fund more school programs, and instead, you're going to end up in a-
Time is up.
Thank you.
Sam V, Sam V, followed by Amane S, followed by Gus Riza.
Hello, my name is Sam. I keep on hearing that parents deserve to know everything about their children, including whether they are transgender and choosing to identify with a different name or pronouns. I completely disagree with this. I myself am a recent graduate from the CVUSD district, and I am queer. You say you'd immediately want to know if your school discovered that your child is transgender, but what makes you believe that you, as a parent, deserve that? It is naive to believe that all parents will be supportive of their transgender child.
Let her speak.
If the school called to inform that their child is asking to be called a different name, different pronouns, or a different gender, just imagine the situation you would put the student in. You don't know what their parents are like. They could be kicked out or attacked by their parents, both physically and verbally. Their home life may become a living hell because of that one call. If all you do is make comments about the community, whether it's poking fun at us or just hating us and showing your disgust, you've already proven to your kid that this space is not a safe home. You shouldn't be able to call yourself supportive and loving parents. If your child is stressing school staff over you, I think that speaks for itself. This policy is dangerous, and it is unfair to blame teachers and staff for creating the safe space that you, as parents, never could.
Thank you.
Amane S, followed by Gus Riza, followed by Esther Kim. Amane S.
My name is Amane Sanati. I'm a product of this district and alumni of this school. Now as a school counselor on the Board of Directors of the National Association of Social Workers California chapter, I'm honored to speak in support of youth and against this dangerous policy this board is considering due to ethical, legal, and safety concerns that contradict the purpose of our service. As school social workers, we adhere to a code of ethics. The NSW Code of Ethics states that social workers should protect confidentiality of all information obtained in the course of professional service, except for compelling professional reasons, which we heard about before. Safety. As social workers, we take an oath to do no harm in our work with students, parents, staff members, and the community. A vital part of our work with students includes providing students with a safe space, building a trusting working relationship, and ensuring confidentiality unless there's a safety concern. We are committed to protecting vulnerable populations, including our trans students. We put our students' safety and trust first, which this policy directly contradicts. Students in 2023 have a lot on their plates. We went through pandemics, school shootings, social media, bullying, stress about their futures, the list goes on. Our students are not okay.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Gus Riza, followed by Esther Kim, followed by Joel Jimeno. Gus Riza, followed by Esther Kim, followed by Joel Jimeno.
I want to thank you, board, for allowing us to speak to you, having the courage to bring this bill. I'm for this bill. Excuse me. Children cannot enter contract. They use fear-mongering tactics all the time. I've heard from people from all over the community. You were put in place for this community and not Sacramento like Tony, not like the activists that have come in here. I can guarantee you, most of the people in the gay community here don't even live in our community. There are maybe a few, there may be a few here that are actually part of our community. The majority of people and their, for their kids, the parents, are part of this community. You're representing that. Don't listen to the outside stupidity like Tony and everything else that's going on. Listen to your constituents who put you on the board.
Thank you.
Esther Kim, followed by Joel Jimeno, followed by Karen Reyes.
Hello, I'm Esther Kim, and I graduated from Chino Hills High. I want to ask a question. Why are you here? Member Asalee, you claim the government is trying to own children, making parents feel as if their bond with their kids is threatened.
Please address the board.
That makes no sense. Raising a kid requires incredible dedication and time. Nothing can match that bond. Schools can't influence children like parents do or force a kid to keep secrets. Parents do not fear. Using schools as watchdogs to report harmless news to parents opposes the same rhetoric you're fighting for. Family conversations about gender are not school business, so why are you here to make schools tattle on family affairs? A child-to-parent bond stems from love and trust, not surveillance. Schools and families share love and trust that students will return educated and safe. This is threatening both. Why did you call folks here not to benefit families, perhaps for a bigger agenda against public education? Members Asalee, please stay in your district and legislature. Parents, if you don't trust public schools, please go to private school or homeschool. Why are you here in our board room? Board, students don't want your policies, we just want our education back. Thank you.
Time up.
Thank you.
Joel, Joel Jimeno, followed by Karen Reyes, followed by Marisol DePaolo.
Hi, my name is Joel. I'm with the statewide LGBTQ civil rights organization Equality California, but I'm also an area resident, and I attended schools in CVUSD. The forced outing policies like this one are damaging. The fact is, there is no policy that is going to stop the simple fact that some kids are going to be queer and trans. These policies rob families of the opportunity to build trust with one another and support LGBTQ youth coming out on their own terms in a way that best fits their family. In addition, these policies separate trans students from their support systems, both at home and at school. They hinder teachers and school staff from being able to support trans youth and harm teacher-student relationships by requiring them to violate students' trust. The anti-trans attacks and rhetoric taking place in schools come from hate groups that are using parents' lack of familiarity with trans people by pitting parents and teachers- are using parents' lack of familiarity with trans people by pitting parents and teachers against one another and spreading misinformation.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Karen Reyes, Karen Reyes, followed by Marisol DePaola, followed by Greg Abduch.
This was written by a student who wanted to remain anonymous. I figured out that I was transgender in middle school. I waited a year or so and then came to, came out to a parent. I was ridiculed heavily, yelled at, and called names. This was the reaction my parent had when I told them myself, on my terms, when I thought I was ready and safe. Nothing could have prepared me for that reaction and those vile words. The worst part was, this happened in public. I know many adults who would have had the same or worse reaction if their child came to them with such an identity. I go to school to learn and be myself. I can be referred to as I am most comfortable, and I can have support system for any discrimination or harassment from students or staff. I've been harassed by students, called names, followed and had things thrown at me. I've been discriminated against by staff, having them refuse to refer to me as my preferred name. When I continued to email them about it, they refused to refer to me at all. My identity is my personal business, and I get to decide who gets to know and when. Hiding this information from parents has a deeper reason than being sneaky or wanting to hide. I want to be safe, I want to go to school and be myself, to learn, to get away from any issues I'm-
Time is up.
Thank you.
Marisol DePaola, followed by Greg Abduch, followed by Nicolette B.
Good evening, members of the Board Superintendent Cabinet. My husband and I have been educators for Chino for over twenty-seven years. We also have two children that were once CVUSD students. I'm here today to talk to you on behalf of the MTSSB counselors and the protocol and procedures we have to see students. There seems to be a misconception that we're keeping secrets from parents. On the contrary, we require signed parent permission slips to participate in our small groups and individual groups. We focus on helping children with our coping skills. On occasion, we do see the need to refer to students to our more intensive services. We call the parents and we refer them to either Carisoles, Chino Human Service Behavioral Health, or ERM's counseling. All of these services that I mentioned do require parent permission, as well as an interview with a parent. In regards to this parent notification policy, this policy seems to target our most vulnerable students for mental health issues. LGBTQ students have the highest suicide rates, have the highest rates of abuse. They are also most vulnerable to human trafficking. Imagine-
Time is up.
Thank you.
Greg Abduch, followed by Nicolette B, followed by Jessica Tapia.
Hi, board. My name is Greg Abduch. I'm the founder of an organization called Now or Not on Our Watch. And since this was cut down to a minute, and I appreciate that, because I'd like to hear everybody talk, I just want to say a couple things. One, I appreciate a board that is standing up for parents' rights, but not just parents' rights, family rights, which includes the kids. And I think it's interesting that we're hearing a lot of conversation about the suicide rates, and the suicide rates that we have right now are currently under a policy where we're keeping secrets. So shouldn't we change something? Thanks for protecting our kids, and thanks for protecting our schools.
Thank you.
Nicolette B, followed by Jessica Tapia, followed by Jasmine Chavez. Nicolette B. She's right here. Nicolette B is here. No? You don't have to. Jessica Tapia.
My name is Jessica Tapia. I was a teacher myself at a nearby school district, and this past year, they presented me with a directive to withhold information about a student's gender identity from his or her parents in order to keep my job. I clarified, are you asking me to lie to parents? And they said yes, for student safety and privacy. I could not understand how I was hired and expected to uphold honesty as my district states on their website, but now, all of a sudden, I'm expected to lie. I couldn't understand when and how children began needing privacy from the very ones who God appointed to protect and care for them. I left that meeting in complete turmoil because I realized that day, I could no longer be both a Christian and a public school teacher. Then I remembered what Pastor Jack Hibbs taught me, that the word of God says, which is how being a coward is a sin. So I chose to obey the Lord. I loved my students, but I was ripped from them. They fired me because they could not accommodate my religious beliefs when I spoke out and said, "I will not lie to parents, or students, or myself." I deeply urge you to vote in parental notification. Children belong to their parents, therefore parents-
Time is up.
Jasmine, Jasmine Chavez.
Chavez, guys. Next speaker, please.
Jasmine Chavez, followed by Hansel Ozami, followed by Ben Richards. Jasmine Chavez.
Hi, good evening. So I come here as a professional, working in mental health. I'm a behavioral health and education consultant for the past twelve years. I've worked across Southern California, Hollywood elites, to single-family homes. The number-one indicator for improved childhood outcomes is parental involvement. It has, parents have to be involved in their children's life in order to see better outcomes, better future from their, from them. I've been, I've also interacted with dozens of professionals, medical professionals, teachers. I've been in a lot of classrooms. And let me tell you this, as a professional who has dedicated their life, who has helped, last year my caseload has helped, was fourteen, and out of those fourteen, they've all met one hundred and sixty goals collectively. Nobody cares as much as parents care. I've seen it. That, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hansel Ozami, Hansel Ozami, followed by Ben Richards, followed by Samuel Turley.
Good evening, board members. Thank you, President Shaw, for this meeting. I just want to say, be encouraged. Do not be intimidated by the LGBTQXYZ community. I am a local pastor, and all I've heard was threats, legal threats against you. Look at that.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. Whoever has that, stand up, leave. You're, you're not going to be here anymore. Remove yourself. We will not proceed until you're gone. Go. Have a nice day. Thank you. One second. You know what the funny thing is? There's a bill on the floor that will actually give him a ticket.
I support this policy to notify parents because there is no good reason to keep secrets from parents. And the accusation of, there's going to be abuse when parents are notified by children's sexuality is, is disgusting. You're calling all parents abusers, and that's not true. In fact, parents love their children. And I just want to say, as a pastor, God is love, and He loves all people, including the XYZ community. But this God of love that gave His blood to forgive our sins also said in Matthew eighteen, "If anyone causes these little ones to stumble or sin, may a millstone be thrown around his neck."
Thank you.
Time is up.
Ben Richards, Ben Richards, followed by Samuel Turley, followed by Stephen P.
These people want to rescue your kids from you, and we do not trust the apparatus that's run by the very same state that is in charge of our crumbling cities and rapid homeless problems. We don't trust the corrupt teachers union that supplies the rainbow badges that are designed to communicate, "You're safe with me because you aren't safe with your parents. We can talk sex, and you don't have to tell them." We don't trust teachers who want to bring this pride flag into the classrooms that doesn't just stand for wanting to love who you want to love. I wish it did. It stands for desecrating our venerated religious symbols, turning the cross into a stripper pole, and it stands for drag shows where grown men dress like strippers. So we have no other choice, and we must stand now. We are at the precipice of a great conflict. It requires courage. It requires tenacity, and it requires drive. And we're growing, and we're expanding, and we're not going to stop. And if you think we're tired-
Time is up.
Thank you. Can the next speaker please approach the podium?
Samuel Turley, Samuel Turley, followed by Stephen P, followed by Amy Davlin Feria.
My name is Samuel Turley, and I am the Inland Empire Civic Engagement Associate for Equality California, which is the nation's largest statewide LGBTQ+ civil rights organization. We are, we are incredibly opposed to Board Policy fifty, twenty point one. As the proud son of a former music teacher who taught for over thirty-five years, I've seen firsthand the importance of, of, of that trust between students and teachers. Many of my father's students would come to him with deeply personal issues that were affecting them at home. He was their trusted resource when they had no one else to turn to. As I grew up, around the time I was twelve, I first realized that I was different. I was gay. I struggled, and throughout my middle school and high school, keeping my secret. I knew I was gay, but growing up in a small rural community that wasn't accepting, and seeing all the LGBTQ kids that were out, getting bullied, really kept me from, from feeling safe in, in coming out and being myself. I wasn't ready to tell my parents either, not because I, I didn't think they wouldn't be accepting.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Stephen P, followed by Amy Davlin Feria, followed by Deborah Woolery. Stephen P.
Thank you, guys, for having me here today. As a parent in this district, I am so thankful for this policy. I'm so thankful, as a father of three young girls, that if anything were to be secret from me, I wish that the teachers would let me know, and I would bring them in, and I would help them, I would walk with them, I would encourage them. We would walk through whatever they're going through together. So as a parent, this is extremely wonderful. And I, I look up here, and I see Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego right here, and, and, and the government wants to throw you in the fire. They want to throw you in the fire, but don't bow the knee. Continue to fight, keep the faith, finish the race, continue to do the work of an evangelist. Guys, the Bible says that if you confess with your mouth and believe in your heart that Jesus Christ died on the cross, that you will be saved. And so, guys, if that's not you today, I wouldn't want anyone here. We love you, guys. We love everybody here. And I think it would be a disservice to not tell you the truth, that Jesus died on the cross for your sins, that if you repent and have a change of heart, that you can be saved, you will go to heaven forever. God bless you, guys.
Thank you.
Amy Davlin, followed by Deborah Woolery, followed by Timothy Johnson.
It's been said that it takes a village to raise a child. I wholeheartedly reject that notion. It takes parents and a family to raise a child. God specifically grants parents, not a village, with parenthood. And it is up to parents to decide how to raise that child and deal with any issues, including dysmorphia and other mental illnesses. Why is LGBTQ agenda being shoved down the throats of Americans from corporate sponsorships to the government ideological curriculum? And why are we over-sexualizing our children? The bottom line is money and vast political power. The left is the party of pedophilia you cannot prove otherwise. The line, the red line that they have crossed-
I'd her speak.
-is our kids. Tonight's vote affirms that God's children are not for sale. Groomers and pedophiles sexualize children and teach them to keep secrets from their parents. Teachers who propagate gender ideology and keep secrets from parents are pedophiles and groomers by nature. In the words of Pink Floyd, "Hey, teachers, leave those kids alone."
Time is up.
Deborah Woolery, followed by Timothy Johnson, followed by Andy Lee.
I have been with this, am I on? Okay, I have been with this district for thirty-one years. As educators, we are like the police and firefighters, held to a higher standard in our actions and our words and on social media. We know the best way to educate our students is by example. Are you not asking us to break the law by passing this policy and putting our students at risk? We are making educators follow a rule that is illegal, one that may be morally and ethically opposed to too. What example is that setting? When I'm in a hurry and I want to go faster than the speed limit, when I need to change directions, why can't I just make a U-turn? Why do I need to go through the TSA line at the airport? There are thousands of rules and laws that people don't like. But what would happen if everyone decided to only follow the laws that they like and ignore the rest? Chaos and lawlessness. You want to pick and choose what laws and rules you will follow, and you expect the district students and employees to follow them all. In this country, if we do not like a law, we comply with it until we can change it. Otherwise, it is considered defiance. What lesson are you, are your actions teaching our students? What, that might-
Time is up.
Thank you.
Timothy Johnson.
All right, thank you. I'm in support of this policy. I think it is good and great. If you're trying to hide stuff from parents, and you're talking about sexuality with a teacher, I think there's a problem. Why do you need to hide that? I'm going to leave you with one question. If Ronnie tells his teacher, Ronnie's, could be Bill, could be anybody, that his dad will beat him because he has brought drugs to school or got three Fs on his report card, are we going to lie to the parents about that too? Parents need to be involved. All this bill says is, hey, we just want the parents to know what's going on. They're not saying they're not, can't be gay, can't be trans. We just want the parents involved. And I echo what Jasmine said, that that is the key for success for these kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Lee, Andy Lee, followed by Eric Dolan, followed by Jennifer Kennedy. Eric Dolan.
My name is Eric Dolan. I'm reading this statement for Lance Christensen, Vice President of the California Policy Center. For over a century, the United States Supreme Court has consistently ruled that parents, not schools, possess the mental right to raise their children and to direct activities and make decisions regarding their child's care, and to control their education, health, and religion. As such, children do not, I repeat, do not have a right to privacy from their parents. Nowhere does current state law require teachers and administrators to openly lie to parents. Why the Superintendent of Public Instruction continues on his crusade to intentionally misrepresent the law and shamelessly bully this board is beyond me. This board is to be commended for proactively endorsing policies that strengthen and validate legal and constitutional parental notification procedures. As such, I support this parental notification vote, policy, and stand ready to help the school board better communicate with parents. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jennifer Kennedy, followed by Nick Wilson, followed by Kelsey Robertson.
Good evening, board. My name is Jennifer Kennedy. I'm an attorney, and I'm speaking on behalf of our duty, nonpartisan, nonreligious group of parents safeguarding children. Board, I've got to say, and everybody in the room, I must say, I'm so excited, my esteemed legal colleague, so glad to hear, there is no law. You will hear opponents of this measure say there's a law requiring teachers to lie. You will say, you will hear, there is a law requiring these parent secrecy policies. There is no law. No one can cite it. They continue to say AB 1266, and there's no citation to law. So every argument we're hearing about the board exposing itself to lawsuits, that is false, and you can put that to rest. Now, I will tell you where there is law, and that law is ED Code 51, 51101. That's the law that enumerates the things that schools should be telling parents about, and that is, as another one mentioned, absences, truancy, risk of retention, et cetera. We have to tell parents about that. This is no different. This policy seeks additional notification when there is a behavior-
Time is up.
Thank you.
Nick Wilson, followed by Kelsey Robertson, followed by Andy Lee.
My name is Nick Wilson. If tonight's not an indicator that we all need a little more God in our life, I don't know what is. Because they are attacking you, they're attacking the parents, they're attacking Assemblyman Bill Asalee. And thank God he came, our Assemblymember's MIA. He's ignored his constituents. He wrote a letter. Tonight is morally repugnant to insinuate that they should keep the parents out of their children's life. It is so sad to me, what I'm seeing here tonight with the behavior. Please follow through with what you have set out to do, because nothing is more important than protecting our children and keeping the parents involved in their lives. Number one. Number two, I keep hearing how these people are all white supremacists and all this, that, and the other. Well, having worked white supremacy organizations as a detective, these are people who love their children. Don't demonize people who care so much about their children.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Kelsey Robertson, followed by Andy Lee, followed by Alexis Charros.
I am here in opposition of this agenda item. Students may feel more comfortable being open and honest about being transgendered at school and not at home for a multiple of reasons, but one of the most important ones is that sometimes it is simply not safe for a trans student to come out to their parent or guardian. If a student is outed to their family without their consent, this could possibly result in abuse, hate crimes, getting kicked out of homes, and extreme cases being murdered, as these are all things that are not unheard of and common in homophobic and transphobic households. If a student wants to be referred to in a certain way at school, this can help them feel valid and safe and lowers the risk of suicide. It is proven that suicide rates decrease if a transgender person's gender is affirmed, even if it is as simple as a name and pronoun change. As a transgender individual myself, I can speak from firsthand account that my mental health drastically improved when I was given the opportunity to be myself and have my correct name and pronouns used.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Andy Lee, followed by Alexis Charros, followed by Darlene Berg. Andy Lee.
Hello. Good evening, Board. Thank you for having me. I remember when I was in school not too long ago, that my teacher taught all of us in the classroom that every child is special in the body they were born in. That is not the message that the LGBT agenda preaches. They teach the opposite. They teach kids that you're born in the wrong body and that there's something wrong with you. Therefore, if you're a boy, come on in, we'll make you a girl, and if you're a girl, we'll make you a boy. And that is so wrong. It's messing these kids up. And now we wonder why the suicide rate is as high as it is. It's because these kids are being confused and misled. And that's why it's the job of the educator and the parents to protect their children from these damaging ideologies. And the LGBT community, if they really cared about the kids, they would tell them they were special in the body they were born in, and therefore, you're loved and you're special, and there's nothing that you need to change. We've got to embrace you and just lift you up, and we don't need to teach this damaging ideology that's causing such a high suicide rate.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Alexis Charros, followed by Darlene Berg, followed by Brenton Daniels.
It is heartbreaking to watch as you laugh while your supporters butcher, misname, and attack your opposition. Your face and body language says it all. We're dealing with real issues and real children's safety. There is no room for theatrics, especially from the head of the board, that has been entrusted with the well-being of all children in this district. The reason why we have statewide elected officials is to make sure that laws are upheld. Like it or not, these laws are in place for the protection and freedom of all citizens, not just those who you deem worthy. We will not back down. We will not go away, and we will continue to stand up for all children.
Darlene Berg, followed by Brenton Daniels, followed by Lauren Daniel.
I'm blown away by these Christians name-bashing our community. I'm a lesbian parent with thriving kids in this district. I also volunteer in these schools, and I'll take anyone's support, no matter where they are from, just as it seems the opposition does too. I have a letter from a student who is transgender. I'll email it to you so you can read the whole thing. But they write, firstly, during our last meeting, it was mentioned that the intention was not to out us, but rather to inform our parents about our gender identities. However, if you think about it, wouldn't we have already told our parents if we were ready? It's time that you realize that just because you might be willing to accept and listen to your child, it is not guaranteed that all parents will. Secondly, I want to address the continuous fear and pressure that you unknowingly put upon all of us trans youth. While you may believe that you are doing us a favor by outing us, the truth is, we're constantly in a state of panic, fearing the consequences of being outed. Some of us may even feel the need to hide our identities, which essentially is a form of oppression.
Brenton Daniels, followed by Lauren Daniel, followed by Jim Gallagher.
I have two at home. Just bought two new ones.
I'm sorry, there was nobody talking and there's a...
Brenton Daniels, followed by Lauren Daniel, followed by Jim Gallagher.
Good morning, Board members. My name is Brenton Daniels, and I'm a former LGBTQ student. I have the Chino Valley Unified School District and now an active community member. I'm here in opposition of the parental notification board policy 5020.1. I came out to my parents my senior year of high school, but I'd known that I was gay since the fifth grade. As a child, I was bullied for being gay, and this was hard to reckon with, as my own parents had expressed their disdain and hate of LGBTQ persons. I didn't have a support system at home or in school I could confide in, and was especially afraid if my parents found out. After finally deciding that I wanted to come out to my parents, I decided that I need to research homeless shelters for LGBTQ youth in the area and LGBTQ community resources. I came out knowing that I could be disowned from my family and rejected in many of my social groups. I'd like to make it abundantly clear that if I had come out as gender nonconforming or gay to a trusted family member and been outed before I was ready, it would have been detrimental to my emotional and mental and social life. I have been kicked out of my house before for being gay. When I came out, I had to take on the role of an educator for the LGBTQ community to my parents, who were devastated that I thought that they would throw me on the street if I was gay. I would like to explore the hypothetical...
Time is up.
Thank you.
Followed by Jim Gallagher, followed by Kirsten.
Hi, I had much more to say, but to the supporters of this proposition, if any of your kids were or are part of the targeted community, then I can guarantee you that they would fall into the category of students living in an unaccepting and hateful home with ignorant parents who choose to shove their religious beliefs down any reachable throat rather than love their child or any child for who they are. It is because of this that my mom makes it clear that her classroom can serve as their second home. So as opposed to being labeled as a groomer, my mom instead receives thank yous from students she taught decades ago or students from the past year. Reading the words of students thanking her for saving their life and knowing that she has been able to connect with at least one child is what motivates her to keep teaching. Therefore, when a handful of students come out to my mom the first week of the school year and ask her to call them by a different name or use different pronouns, just as it happens every year, she will gladly honor their wish, and I can assure you that no parent or colleague of hers will be informed. And one last comment. Sonia, I know your Proud Boys have liberal photography as a side hobby, so tell the Proud Boys in the building that I'm available for me and greet after this. Thank you.
Jim Gallagher.
Mr. Gallagher, it's turn to speak. Can you please be quiet?
Okay. So first of all, I want to say thank you to Superintendent Thurmond for showing up tonight. Secondly, I just want to point out, research from the National Center for Youth Law in 2015 indicated that almost 80% of adolescent Californians already discuss their health concerns with their parents and already come out and talk to their parents. I think that's a good thing. However, in one study, youth were asked if they would seek care for certain issues if parent notification was mandated. Forty-five percent of the teens that were surveyed said they would not seek their parents' permission if they were suffering from depression, and less than 20% for other situations such as LGBTQ. That's a serious thing. If teens are not guaranteed privacy, they are less likely to seek these counseling or medical services. That's important. 10 seconds. I'm going to say right now to the students of this school board, write a letter. This is going to pass. Write letters under the uniform.
Thank you.
Kirsten, followed by Chow Nguyen, followed by Scott Carter.
Pat, can you say the three names one more time, please?
Kirsten, followed by Chow Nguyen, followed by Scott Carter.
Can the other two, one second. Can the other two speakers please prepare for when it's your time? Thank you.
I'm reading this for a community member who's not here. As a member of the LGBT community, I can unequivocally tell you that it's imperative for young people to have a safe haven and decide when they want to come out or identify. I was born in San Francisco in the 80s, and my entire family grew up supporting and embracing the LGBTQ+ community. I had every reason to believe that my parents would support me if I came out. When I was accidentally outed at 17 by a family member, my mother was anything but supportive. There were screaming and yelling, derogatory comments hurled at me while telling me that I could not possibly be a lesbian. Unable to escape the onslaught of my mother, who I thought was an LGBTQ ally, I became suicidal. I told my family that I'd rather die than to have to keep enduring this constant barrage. I was admitted to an acute psychiatric hospital. Upon admission, I was forced to have, okay. She went to a Catholic school, and when I was crying at night with bloodshot eyes, the nuns pulled me out and said I could just...
Time is up.
Thank you.
Chow Nguyen, followed by Scott Carter, followed by Kylene Vias.
My name is Chow Nguyen. My pronouns are she and her. I oppose this policy to A1. I would like to offer a song to the board. It's called "Please Call Me By My True Name." My joys like springs so warm, it makes flowers bloom all over the earth. My pains like a river of tears, so vast it fills the four oceans. Please call me by my true names, so I can hear all my cries and laughter at once, so I can see that my joy and pain are one. Please call me by my true names, so I can wake up and so the door of my heart can be left...
Time is up.
Thank you.
Scott Carter, Scott Carter, followed by Kylene Vias, followed by Misty.
I did not come with any prepared statements.
Another one? One second, Mr. Carter, sorry. Thank you, security, for handling this. I appreciate that.
I am grateful for the...
Wait, one second, one second. Are we good to go? Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I don't want you to be interrupted. Go ahead.
My name is Scott Carter. I have taught in this district for 25 years. I attended this school back in the 80s. We didn't have this problem back then, because everybody was hiding in the closet. It's wonderful to see that our society is more open now and people can actually be who they want to be. The problem is, you will cause the death of one of our students. This policy will out a student, putting them into a hostile household, which will further their mental degradation to the point where they will harm themselves. All of our previous lawsuits will be nothing at that point compared to this. This policy will kill somebody.
Ma'am, ma'am, please remove yourself. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm speaking on behalf of Carla Vandesteg tonight. She is not here. Every year for 25 years, I sit in front of parents at back-to-school night and ask them to be involved in their child's education. I tell them it is a team, and without their critical part of the team is missing. I sit at parent conferences and at IAPs, and I ask the parents to pay attention to what their child is doing, help them ask questions, check their homework. When a child doesn't feel well, go on a field trip. Want to watch a PG movie in class? Give them any type of medication. We have to get permission from parents. If child lies, steals, cheats, or threatens someone, he gets hits in the head, we call the parents to discuss it with them. The list goes on. I ask the parents to inform me if there's been any significant life event in their family so that I can understand what the child is going through that day at school. The key in all of this is parents. I am not the child's authority. I am the teacher. I am not in charge of the student. I do not buy their clothes, raise them, teach them, put their clothes on, brush their teeth, pay their bills, get their haircut, go to soccer games. I am not their parent. I am their teacher. I do not make life decisions for the child that sit in my classroom, because I am their educator, not their parent. The child is under the...
Time is up.
Thank you.
One second, Misty. Pat, do we have the next two speakers ready to go?
Misty, followed by Nicole Baccario, followed by Cecil John Howell.
The ones that are going to be up next, please be prepared to come up to the podium once it's your turn. Thank you.
It is essential to recognize that parents are the primary caregivers and educators of their children. Our kids are being told they can trust teachers and friends more than their parents and family. This leads to kids questioning our love because truth that is being twisted while at school. No one is against anybody's decision to be whatever sexual orientation you choose to be. The world is not against you. What we are against is anyone trying to step in and take away our role as parents. Anyone who is lying to our kids that they love our kids more than we do. If you truly feel suicidal, you need your parents even more. Seek out a therapist. Keeping secrets makes it worse. Lastly, shame on the teachers' unions for overstepping their bounds. The last time I checked, unions were created to protect the employee, making sure they have good working conditions, job protection, fair wages, et cetera. No one hired the unions to tell us how to parent our children. Shame on you for acting like you have the kid's best interests at heart. If you did, you would...
Time is up.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Baccario. As a lifelong resident of Chino, a parent, as well as a former employee of this district, I am in full support of this policy. We are no longer allowing the village to raise our children. Nobody will ever love our children as much as we do. We are watching, and we are not going anywhere. Thank you, President Shaw, for standing up and never backing down. We appreciate you, and we stand with you. As Jason Aldean would say, "Well, try that in a small town."
Cecil John Howell, followed by Bea Capella, followed by Cloud Morgan.
One more time, Pat, I'm sorry.
Cecil John Howell, followed by Bea Capella, followed by Cloud Morgan.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. President Shaw. First of all, I would like to say that I've been hearing that this is some conspiracy, some right-wing Christian conspiracy, that I will say that, as a proud Muslim, that we all, every Muslim in here, in this community, supports President Shaw in this. All right. Secondly, I will say that when I was a kid, I had lots of stuff from my parents. And all the stuff that I hid was stuff that I knew I shouldn't be doing, and I am so glad as a grown man that my parents found out about it and corrected me. No one loves my kids more than me, and I'm sure that no one loves any of your kids more than you do as parents. And so parents need to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bea Capella, Bea Capella, followed by Cloud Morgan, followed by Eric Martinez.
My name is Brenda. I'm a teacher. I'm a parent. I'm a community member here. I'm also from a military family. I meet all the Czechs. I'm Christian. As a teacher, we want nothing more than supportive parents. That would make our life so much easier. For those of you wondering why your kids aren't talking to you, do you wonder why? You know, I took my child to lunch every week. I talked to him about his friends, his activities, how he was doing at school, what was going on. It wasn't every six months. It was every week, so he wasn't afraid to talk to me about what was important. As teachers, we are mandated to report when there's problems with the kids, when it's danger to their health, suicide. You know this, because we sign contracts... You know this because we sign contracts every year about this. Telling a parent, I don't want-
Time is up.
Thank you.
Cloud Morgan, followed by Eric Martinez, followed by Kristi Burchett.
Good evening. My name is Cloud Morgan Clark, and I'm a 15-year-old queer student. If you haven't been convinced by the plethora of educators, counselors, and LGBT adults telling you this decision is a really bad idea, perhaps the statistics may help. 1.8 million LGBTQ youth aged 13 to 23 seriously consider suicide every year. 80% of gender non-conforming suis- youth consider suicide and almost 50% attempt suicide at some point in their life. LGBTQ youth are eight times less likely to attempt suicide if an affirming adult such as a teacher or counselor is in their life. LGBTQ youth who experience parental rejection are eight times more likely to attempt suicide and six times more likely to report major depressive symptoms. Shaw, Nah, and Cruz, and Monroe, you know this is an illegal and immoral policy and we urge you to vote-
Thank you.
Eric. Eric Martinez, followed by Kristi Burchett, followed by Karen-
"Lord, God has you where He wants you." Ephesians 6:11 reads, "Put on the whole aren't-God's armors that you be able to stand against the old strategies of the devil." "God has you where He wants you." Don't feel intimidated. Don't feel like you need to be bullied by people who so desperately need Jesus in their heart and in their lives. Don't feel like you need to be strong-armed. You're the authority and you do as the Lord leads you to do, which is the right thing. Amen?
Thank you.
Kristi Burchett, followed by Karen Amigan, followed by Alan Vargas.
Good evening. I am Kristi Sepulveda Burchett of Educate Advocate. Educate Advocate is a statewide grassroots nonprofit organization that serves families with children with exceptional needs. Many of the points addressed in the parental notification board policy pertain to the families we serve, including bullying, suicidal ideation, as well as gender. We support this. Thank you for the courage in bringing it forward. On our website, we have a page titled "Gender and Minors", and we have a presentation that a law firm that school districts frequently contract with, Fagman, Friedman, and Full Frost, where they lay out their guidance for school districts on affirming identities in student records, including students on an IEP. In the presentation on page 28, they have a slide titled "Creating Perspective Records of Current Students." What they are advising school districts to do here is how to legally create fake records to full parents. And I'm going to email my full board member comments to you all. I'm going to stop there. Again, appreciate you bringing this forward.
Thank you so much.
Karen Amigan, followed by Alan Vargas, followed by Victor Romero.
Good evening, Board. My name is Karen Amigan and I am the Executive Director for Stand Up California and we represent hundreds of families statewide. We are seeing how parents are being eliminated from being involved in our children's lives and being in the dark of what is really happening with our children, not only with their gender, but with their mental health. Parents should be notified and need to know what is happening with their children. We want to be part of the solutions for our children, to protect our children, and who better to be part than the parents? We want to thank the Board for putting this forward and on behalf of the hundred of families that Stand Up California represents in this community, we ask you to vote yes.
Thank you.
Alan Vargas, followed by Victor Romero, followed by Julie McDanielz.
That is a multiple time that you've done it. Please remove yourself right now. You're done. I've given you patience. These signs are blocking. I've looked you straight in the eyes. Remove yourself. We're not proceeding until you leave. Feel free to scream outside. Next speaker, thank you.
Alan Vargas, followed by Victor Romero, followed by Judy McDanielz.
I come before you with anxiety running high and knees feeling like jelly, but I feel that there are some things that require to leave your comfort behind and this whole debate is ludicrous and the fact I feel I need to splash cold water on your faces to remind you about the real issues and telling you to wake up should be enough in itself. There are actual issues requiring attention and ignoring the brain rot we've seen here today, pushed by a fringe part of society who have fallen to lies, I feel a need to tell you as a Catholic bisexual and someone who goes to church every day that God is love and God created the LGBTQ community and He made them that way. And I encourage you to look more and further into yourself and look and think about what you're doing because if the Catholic community has to come here and tell you, "This is wrong," then something is seriously wrong. And I encourage you to take action and vote no because this enough is enough and we will not allow religious hate to be used in such a way because God is love and that is-
Time is up.
Thank you.
Victor Romero. Victor Romero, followed by Judy McDanielz, followed by Michael Sherman.
Good evening, Board. First, I want to thank you, Sonia Shaw, for doing the amazing work you're doing. We back you up 100%. I'm a school-based mental health professional. I've been in the mental health field for over 15 years and I just want to state some facts and real guidelines. Parents have the privilege and the right to all information regarding their child. There is no authorization for the teacher to withhold any information regarding their child to the parent. The only role of the teacher is to teach and not have any side conversations regarding the child's sexual identity or orientation. The teacher must have consent from the parent regarding any sexual or gender information. Also, there has to be an advance directive from the parent to give and/or receive any information to the teacher regarding the child. The teacher is responsible to inform the parent of any concerning behavior and cannot withhold any information unless there is a legal document regarding a confidentiality agreement. I want to close with this. The typical teacher is not trained, nor is a mental health professional, nor can provide any type of support to a child-
Time is up.
Thank you.
Judy McDanielz, followed by Michael Sherman, followed by Brenda Arias.
Good evening. Good evening. I have some well-crafted notes. Obviously, they're out the window. But I do want to, I do want to say that since the last board meeting, I've read a lot about this this topic that we're talking about tonight and the glaring consistent thing that I see is we're talking about minors. We're talking about not emancipated minors. We are talking about minors that are in the custodial care and support of their families. But I want to leave all my notes behind and just say I've heard a lot of emotional fearmongering from a lot of the students here. I want to say that I was once one of those students. I'm not, I was not gay. I was not a lesbian. I was not any of these things. But I too had a secret that I held from my parents until the day that I couldn't. And when I needed help, my parents, they went ballistic. But as time went on, when I really needed the support, they were there for me. They met me where I was at because they're parents. We need to support parents. We need something like this. We need a preemptive policy that sets in mo-
Thank you.
Michael Sherman, followed by Brenda Arias, followed by Brian Donner.
I had to severely reduce this. Children are impressionable. Personal story about me in school. I was confident and had lots of friends. Parents got divorced, moved to a different district. I was bullied horribly in those new schools because I was slow to develop. Kids called me queer, gay, faggot. They teased me about how they think I like boys. So much so that I seriously questioned my sexuality at the time. Maybe they knew better. Never told my parents. Was too embarrassed. Didn't last long, though. Where would I be if I took all these suggestions to heart? My school counselors, where would I be if my school counselors encouraged me to explore that possibility? Where would I be if they told me it was okay or normal and wonderful to be in the LGBT community? Would I be happily married for 17 years with the two kids I'm fighting for? No, probably not. Who knows? I don't know. This is not their job. That is the parent's job. I don't hate the LGBT community. All people are God's children, like myself. What I hate is people that are slowly trying to separate children from their parents based on a very small minority's views.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Brenda Arias, followed by Brian Donner, followed by Heather Peery. Brenda Arias. Brian Donner.
Madam President, Board, Cabinet, and Staff. I didn't know I came to church tonight. I thought it was a board meeting. Waiting to enter this meeting, I saw a T-shirt worn by many in support of this policy that says, "Leave Our Kids Alone." It's hypocritical, misleading, and more than a little bit ironic considering the policy you're poised to adopt requires teachers to absolutely not leave your kids alone. Not only am I a 30-year veteran teacher, but I am a parent of a queer person. My partner and I fostered an open and supportive relationship of our child throughout their childhood. Because of this positive relationship we developed as parents, our child came out to us when they were ready. I would urge you to abide by state and federal law, do what's right, to leave our kids alone, as is printed on so many shirts, and do not pass this policy, but it is clear this board majority does not care about our kids, does not believe in the freedoms promised by our state constitution or the Constitution of the United States. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather Peery, followed by Ariana Guzman, followed by Frank Guzman.
With so many students and families, there is not a one-size-fits-all solution. Keeping issues from parents that involve their children is definitely not a road that California should be going down. It's divisive between parent and child relationships. It does not cultivate a team culture between teachers, staff, parents, and the student. With many different kids, families, and situations, it can get complex. What's not complex is working together as a team, a team of respectful, not condescending group of parents, teachers, and staff that truly let their guard down and team up for the child's well-being. These kids at CVUSD belong to their parents, not to the state of California. The kids in CVUSD belong to their caregivers, not to the state of California. Myself, along with many others in the community of Chino, are in favor of full transparency between schools and teachers.
Thank you.
Ariana Guzman, followed by Frank Guzman, followed by Cecilia Iglesias.
Hello, my name is Ariana Guzman. I currently work at the Pomona Pride Center. I previously worked as a paraeducator in the Chino Valley District. I know students who left the district because they were outed and unfortunately, that is something that will happen. They will leave the district. They will be put in these risky situations. They will be unhoused. They will have these suicidal tendencies if this policy is passed. This is not only detrimental to these students' futures, but it's also going to be detrimental to the district. So I urge you to vote no on this policy because it's not only going to hurt the students, it's going to hurt the families as well.
Thank you.
Frank Guzman, followed by Cecilia Iglesias, followed by Mrs. G. Frank Guzman, followed by Cecilia Iglesias, followed by Mrs. G.
Good evening, Board. Totally disheartened that this circus has been created by the leaders who are supposed to be running school board meetings. Rather than tackle the education, we're tackling items that shouldn't even be here. I I'm just disheartened that we can't even respect leaders who come and speak. Pretty much told Mr. Thurman to leave without saying it. Like, that kind of behavior, absolutely uncalled for. Like, I just, I'm just disheartened that you are supposed to be the leaders protecting our children. And I know you're believing that you're actually doing that, but the reality is, you've divided this community. And how are we supposed to bring people together if you're running the circus? I think you, you're in the wrong job. You should be running the circus, not a school board meeting. I'm just disheartened. Shame on you.
Thank you.
Cecilia Iglesias, followed by Mrs. G, followed by Jessie S.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva, superintendiente y miembros del público. Mi nombre es Cecilia Iglesias, fundadora de la Unión de Padres y Parent Union. Soy latina, nacida en El Salvador. Gracias por la oportunidad de hablar por miles de padres que están siendo marginalizados en la educación pública en California. Como latinos, nosotros somos personas de valores y de fe. Gracias por presentar esta póliza. Esta póliza asegura nuestros derechos como padres y protege a nuestras familias. También esta póliza nos toma nosotros como padres en cuenta y asegura que tengamos mejor comunicación con nuestros hijos, maestros, y personal de nuestras escuelas. Gracias por no tener secretos de los padres con nuestros hijos. Yo sé que hay muchos aquí en esta reunión que profesan representar a nosotros los padres latinos, pero lamentablemente el sistema escolar no nos toma en cuenta. La Unión de Padres-
Thank you. Muchas gracias.
Mrs. G, followed by Jessie S, followed by Gia D.
Hello, thank you. I'm Mrs. G and I'm here in support for you guys and Sonia to you all up there. Thank you for doing the right thing and you guys are leading the way for many other school districts and for parents' rights and for children's rights. And it's, it is all for all children and what, on what side of the aisle you are, we all need to come together somehow and make it right for all children. And they are God's children, no matter what side you are on. And I thank you for your support and I support this. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Jessie, Jessie S, followed by Gia D, followed by Wayne.
Listening to these people talk should let you know it's mental illness. That's all they talk about. Suicide this, they're going to kill themselves here, there, my parents, this and that. This is why you got to keep our kids away from people like this trying to indoctrinate our children. This is wrong. This is mental illness and they have proved it tonight. They have proved it tonight that this is total mental illness they're trying to bring upon our kids.
Let them speak.
So I urge you to vote yes because our kids are very important to us. What can you say? They have said it themselves and I repeat it again. This is mental illness because that's all they've talked about and they don't even realize that they are mentally ill and they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gia, Gia D, followed by Wayne, followed by Byron Gonzalez.
Hi, thank you. I was educated in the public system and academics was the focus. I was inspired and I was challenged by my teachers. In my time in school, I don't remember the teachers or administrators saying, "Don't tell your parents." In fact, it was the opposite. They frequently told our parents and contacted our parents about whatever was relevant to our welfare and our education. Our parents were the ones who guided us in our moral direction. The education system concentrated on educating and teaching. I want to encourage the Board to include parents and policies that, and decisions affecting the students in all matters. The students do not belong to the school. They are the responsibility of the parents. In medicine, we have an oath to say, "Do no harm" and these students are minors whom we should be careful to do no harm. And in medicine, we also have a thing called informed consent, in which you have to provide inform-
Time is up.
Thank you.
Wayne, followed by Byron Gonzalez, followed by Brittany Rudd.
Good evening, Board. Thank you so much for the service, perseverance, and dedication to our community. This is the Father's perspective to you. The students are truly blessed to have you as noble representatives to them and their family values.
One second. Please stop the time. I've given you a warning. I've been so nice to you. It's time to leave now. We're not continuing until you leave. You've done enough of your outbursts. I'm over it. Go and leave. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Are you ready?
One second. Let him walk out, and then you can go. You're good.
The Fathers now are in full support of Parental Notification Policy 5020.1. The evening, this evening, we should be talking about new ways of innovative education, college, or vocational skills that can be part of the new advancement of the Industrial Revolution. But I have many associates of all nationalities that I converse with on a daily basis, from Seattle, San Francisco, to the inland empire. These men highly respect the honest, strong leadership and strong family values that straight talk from their representatives. Fathers are fed up for the fight against those who are dishonest, cunning, and those who have little or no integrity. Parents...
Time is up.
Thank you.
Byron Gonzalez, followed by Brittany Rudd, followed by Joe McTarsney.
I support transparency between schools and parents, because if someone identifies as a different gender, there are some schools that inject kids with Lupron, which is a drug that is, that chemically castrates children, child molesters, as, after they get out of prison. So, so in this law, we are protecting children from being chemically castrated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brittany Rudd, followed by Joe McTarsney, followed by Nathan Bass.
Good evening, Chino Valley. I'm a mom of an incoming kindergarten student and a preschool student not too far behind. Our children of today's society are being told it's okay to lie, cheat, steal, that it's okay to keep secrets from our parents. Not okay. It's a government, it, the government is saying that it's okay to do these things, and it's not. It's a privilege to be in government, and this whole thing with the whole studies, them saying that, oh, it's going to out people? No. Without parent involvement, kids commit suicide. This is unacceptable. I love our children. Our children are victims, and this is not okay. The media is after our kids, and they're the victims. We need to protect them by keeping us, the parents, involved.
Joe, Joe McTarsney, followed by Nathan Bass, followed by Loretta Creelman.
Good evening, Board and President Shaw. I want to thank you, our Board, and those Board members who are standing with us, parents, as the final authority people in our children's lives, as it relates to decisions that they make concerning their identity and their bodies. May you be deeply encouraged, as there are many parents who are not only in this district but across this nation, that are supporting you. Please do not be intimidated by any person, whether they're from Sacramento or they're even here in this district. Continue to be led by truth, because the truth sets people free and provides courage and strength for you, and know that you are in our prayers. Continue on.
Nathan Bass, followed by Loretta Creelman, followed by Lisa Anderson.
Good evening. I'm a representative of Senator Josh Newman, Chino Hills State Senator and Chair of the Senate Education Committee. I'll read portions of an opposition letter which has been provided to you all. Dear Board Members, I am writing to express my opposition to this board policy. The policy you are considering would discourage students from willingly expressing their identity while at school, often only, the only place where some young people can feel safe in their authentic expression of their evolving selves. Multiple academic studies have shown that queer students in restrictive school environments develop severe depression, suicidal ideation, and suicidal behavior at higher rates than those in supportive environments. There are also significant legal concerns that the implementation of the proposed policy would infringe on a student's right to privacy as guaranteed by the California Constitution and existing state law. If the proposed policy is passed, legal challenges are likely to block the implementation of this policy. California classrooms are meant to be safe spaces for children to study, learn, and grow, and in that context, it's hard to see how the proposed policy advances any of those projectives.
Thank you.
Loretta Creelman, followed by Lisa Anderson, followed by Lisa Disbro.
Okay, my name is Loretta Creelman. I'm in awe of what's happened to the United States. I would hope that regardless of what our position is on this, is that we can come together instead of divide, okay? I would rather hold hands on this side, and if I, whatever, whoever's ideation I have, is that we come together. Our children are the victims here if we do not, okay? We have to accept each other. We have to learn how to help our students, because this is what these people up here are trying to do. So instead of fighting them and signaling out who is the bad guy, whose are the good guys, who's the good guys, who's the bad guys, we need to come together, and that's all I'm here to say, is that we need to come together for our children, okay? It's important, because we're seeing what's happening in our society, and it's pushing us apart.
Just the board, please.
So we need to come together, okay? Thank you.
Lisa Anderson, followed by Lisa Disbro, followed by Diane McTarsney.
I'm a special education teacher in this district, and I would like to express my support for this policy. I'm genuinely confused at how parents would actually be in opposition to this policy. Wouldn't you want to know if your child was experiencing a gender identity crisis and get them the support they need? As a special education teacher, it is my job to communicate to parents in an IEP meeting everything that pertains to the child, including their social, emotional well-being. Wouldn't gender confusion fall under this category? I'm thankful this policy is being discussed tonight, because I would feel extremely uncomfortable withholding disinformation from parents. I am a teacher, and that is all. There are no secrets. Schools should never conceal information from parents, ever. I understand there are children who come from families who may not be accepting of their child's decision to change their gender, but this is when schools would be able to provide families with the support they need and get their child intensive counseling immediately. For those who might think what I'm saying is hateful, you are sorely mistaken. I speak from a place of genuine concern for the times we're living in, when the war has been waged on children and creating total disruption of the family unit. There is an evident attack on our families, and it's time to arm...
Time is up.
Thank you.
Lisa Disbro, followed by Diane McTarsney, followed by David Slight. Lisa Disbro, followed by Diane McTarsney, followed by David Slight.
Good evening. I'm a retired teacher. I was forced out of education in order to remain ethical and a caring adult towards my young students. I come from Tony Thurman School District, West Contra Costa Unified, and the policies that are creating confusion and division between students and families are true and were generated from the policies that he supports. I was in the Sacramento when he was introducing his bill to hire secretaries, bus drivers, and other support staff to become teachers with a $10,000 grant, because 27,000 teacher openings exist, because we're leaving. We're tortured, we're harassed, we're silenced, we're treated terribly, and so we can't take it. And now you have what you have, the parents and the children and the teachers needy.
Thank you.
Diane McTarsney, followed by David Slight, followed by Angel, Angel Ariano.
Good evening. I am a proud graduate of Chino High School. I went through the Chino Valley Unified School District K through 12. I was well-prepared for my university and post-high school education, and for that, I thank you. When a teacher has a concern about a student, what do they do? They go to the parents. If a child is squinting at a chalkboard, they're having trouble reading, they're being bullied or are bullying, they're having behavioral issues, they're unusually withdrawn or quiet, or maybe they're continuing to fall asleep in class, what do they do? They go to the parent. If a child is squinting at the chalkboard, a teacher will call a parent. And what does the parent do then? The parent then takes the child to the eye doctor and gets them glasses to help that student, so that student can thrive. My question is, why is the case of transgenderism or gender dysphoria any different? Why is that being withheld from parents? A justification is, they are afraid. They don't feel safe.
Time is up.
Thank you.
David Slight, followed by Angel Ariano, followed by Leila.
Hello, and thank you very much. I don't know what your stance is on this vote, but if you're a yes vote, thank you very much, and God bless you. If you're a no vote, I have four words for you. You were not there. You weren't there when these schoolchildren were born. You weren't there when they took their first step. You weren't there when they said their first word, read their first, their first book. Why? Because they're not your children. And you will not be there when these same kids reach 18, 19, and 20 and realize their bodies were mutilated in the name of trans, whatever that trans thing is. And they will want to commit suicide, and that blood will be on your hands, because you were not there. Thank you very much.
And Leila, Angel Ariano, followed by Leila.
Good evening, CVUSD Board of Education. My name is Angel, no, my name is Mr. Ariano, and I am present to use my freedom of speech as an individual. I am a humanitarian father and active community leader in Pomona, California. I currently serve as the Vice Chairman on the PUSD Child Development Executive Policy Committee. As parents united, we stand, and divided, we fall. I am present to support Policy 5020.1. The time is now, the future is here. Parents' rights matter, and remember, God made you special, and He loves you very much.
Followed by Nar, followed by Patty Kabala, Kabada.
What was the second name, Pat?
Leila.
The first one, and then the second one?
Nar Tadevastian.
Okay. She was just clarifying.
Oh, sorry. Do you want me to...
No, she's next. Leila's next.
You're next, but we just wanted to clarify.
My name is Leila, a current student in CVUSD. I'll start with this. About a week ago to two weeks ago, I received a DM from a CVUSD student who is transgender that says, "Does this mean people like me are safe?" in response to an article talking about the potential privacy laws. That made me think. CVUSD is a majority not safe to many students in this district. To the Board, you've started fires where there has not even been a spark, and you have started the line of a domino effect of chaos, and not for the better of our educations. I watch bridges burn before my eyes, and in the country that is called the United States, this is nothing but United, sorry, this is everything but united. This isn't about education anymore. It isn't. I've watched students start more educational opportunities than this Board has. These same kids you criticize and fight against are the same kids making schools all the more better, all for the more kids. I am a cisgender female. I go home to involve parents who don't agree with my views, but they are involved regardless. Remember that there are parents out there who are not like mine. There are students who fear for their lives. In fact, this Board is like that. This bill only will attract potential lawsuits, just like in Chico Unified or New Jersey, and you know we have gotten lawsuits, gone to the Ninth Circuit...
Time is up. Thank you.
Time is up. Nar Tadevastian, followed by Patty Kabala, followed by Philip Costas.
butchered my name.
Sorry.
It's okay. Tadevastian. So I heard everybody today, and I just want to say that I am in support of this. Only reason why, because it's correcting a mistake that was made by the state in the first place. So because of the mistake made by the state implementing these laws and rules against parents, because it was against parents, we now have to correct it. And so I don't understand now why we're getting opposition for correcting a mistake, which I thank you guys for attempting to do. I heard a lot of threats about lawsuits, threats about suicides, threats about privacy for kids, threats about unsupportive parents, and that doesn't seem like it's individual families' problem. It seems like, I mean, it is an individual family problem, but those issues need to be addressed, and there are, there's funding for that, for mental health and whatnot. So we need to address all of these issues and not just threaten everybody who's against the agenda with...
Time is up.
Thank you.
Patty Kabada, followed by Philip Costas, followed by Mike Byron, Baron.
Hola, me llamo Patricia Kabada, y yo estoy aquí porque ustedes tienen muchos padres que son, que no tienen papeles, son endocumentados. Ustedes saben que hay muchos padres que quieren venir a estas juntas pero tienen miedo para usar sus voces. Hay muchos padres que quieren saber lo que está pasando en las escuelas porque es injusto que los padres no sepan. Porque lo que están enseñando en las escuelas son puras purquerías. Es purquería si es contra la fe de mucha gente. Y lo que se debe de ser es respetar. Y lo que ustedes están haciendo ahorita es respetando todas las diferentes comunidades que están alrededor de ustedes. Hay diferentes religiones. Hay diferentes culturas. Pero mucha gente que dice que no debe de haber este tipo de comunicación no sabe cómo son las diferentes culturas que viven aquí. ¿Qué va a pasar con los inmigrantes que vienen aquí?
Disgraces.
Philip Costas, followed by Mike Baron, followed by Delia Bahara.
Distinguished Board, President Shaw. I'm Phil. I've been a special educator for 25 years and counting. I have two high schoolers in our local high schools, and I've always counted parents to be fully involved in the educational process. I urge you to vote yes. Also, I just have to say, President Shaw, I guess it took a woman to do a man's job, because, because there are great women of the Bible. There's Esther, there's Ruth, there's so many, but Shaw, what I saw was a God thing. I saw you slay Goliath. Thurman, your time is up. Sacramento, your time is up. Wokeism, your time is up. Satan, your time is up. Thank you so much for what you did. Stand up for what is right. God bless America.
Mike Baron, followed by Delia Bahara, followed by Zahar Shath. Mike Baron...
I can't see you. If you want to stand up and say that again, please...
Mike Baron...
Do not have outbursts, guys.
Delia Bahara.
If you guys follow your science, I could probably see who's yelling, just FYI.
Followed by the final speaker, Jeanette Falcon.
I greet everybody here today with the greetings of Islam. May God's peace and blessings be upon everybody here. I thought it was hot outside when I got here, but it was much more heated inside when I walked through those doors. I was not ready for that. As a father of two young men, young, two young boys, the statistics quoted tonight are very true and very scary, and they scare the hell out of me. What would a parent's mental health state be if their, if their children committed and completed suicide while they had no clue what they were dealing with? I'm not saying this to score brownie points on either side. I'm saying this to represent parents. And we need to have enough of the hypocrisy, because every single parent in this room would want to know what's going on with their kids at school. Thank you. God bless. Salam aleikum.
Thank you.
The final speaker is Jeanette Falcon. Jeanette Falcon.
You submitted a card. I know, I see you waving over there.
There was no card submitted.
Is he able to do that if there was a mis-shuffle? I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't think that you guys are in this position. Let us figure out how we want to proceed. Thank you. Let us figure out how we want to proceed. Thank you. Oh, my gosh. What security guard did you give it to? Does she have any there?
They were for non-agenda. They were non-agenda.
Did we call his name during "non-agenda"?
Their instructions were posted on the wall. Non-agenda.
We didn't?
They were non-agenda items.
His non-agenda item? Okay. All right. It was a non-agenda item, so we wouldn't even hear it now.
Okay, I guess it was a non-agenda item submitted?
Okay, so that's why.
The card was filled out incorrectly and I'm being told that we cannot accept it. I'm sorry. Any more speakers, Pat? That turned in cards? Do you want to take a break before comments? I'm going to give everybody a break. I'm sure everybody needs to get a drink of water, go to the bathroom, and the board's requesting it. So, before we proceed with comments and a vote, we're going to take a quick five-minute break.
We're not told by our district. Office of law. Well, it's kind of like a damned if you do, damned if you don't.
I don't hear, you know?
The problem is, is when those were this, this, it was shaping the conversation for us as teachers. And the way I'm going to do this is if we're not told, we're supposed to be like, you know, like someone's rights, someone's legislative rights, but it should be like-
Are we going to get in trouble for denying them because they submitted it?
We were trying to say, "No." Okay, so, hold on.
May I ask, who was the attorney who was up here?
But isn't it- do I call you for comments or you just press the button?
Is that him right there?
I want to see him. Because we didn't script it in that way. I'm going to call on comments in order at the end of your comments. Do you want to tell comments about the policy? Yeah, yeah. That's actually a button. I'll press the button first. Okay. Can I have all board members please return so we can reconvene? All board members, please. I know, but that's probably your fault too. We'll talk about that.
Gentlemen, she said he wanted to speak, but it was time.
I swear I didn't hear that. I promise on my mom in heaven I did not hear that. Really? That's kind of scary. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to make you feel uncomfortable. We're missing two board members. Mr. Cruz, Mr. Nar, where are you? Why? Yeah. And I'll clarify that they've had him and-
How do I request- I'll ask you later again. How do I request the legal document? That you did the report on the policy?
But they-
Do I have to request it to her?
I would send a question to Andy.
Okay, we have everybody? I now reconvene the meeting? Can I please have order in the audience? I now reconvene the meeting. We had to go over there and clarify. Pat does have in possession these three cards. It would be unethical-
Two.
Two cards. I thought I saw three, sorry. To not listen to them. The right thing to do is to listen to those speakers. So, I am going to allow that during this time. Pat?
Steve Campos and Candy Olson. Steve Campos?
First off, I just want to thank you guys for what you're doing. You guys are saving public education. Assemblyman Naseely, thank you for what you do for us out there in that cesspool. And one of the reasons, I'm a 25-year PE teacher and like Jessica Tapia, we've been under fire and under attack. So, this policy is very important for us as PE teachers because we deal with these issues of someone coming into a locker room that could be violating someone's religious rights if we believe that there is two genders. And so, this bill or this policy will be something that is going to greatly protect us and protect public education. When I think about Sacramento and AB 223, 665, 659, and 1078, what Tony Thurman and Gavin Newsom are trying to do is they're trying to ruin public education because there is no- there is no common sense reason why these bills should be passed. And it's things like these, these local policies, that are extremely important in order for us to do our jobs to the best of our ability and to protect the children and the parents of the community who we took an oath to serve.
Thank you.
Candy Olson? Candy Olson?
Andy Olson, are you here? Raise your hand. Okay. It looks like they must have left. Okay, we'll move on to comments, discussion from the board. If you can use your light system, I'll call upon when we see it.
Can they put the signs down so we can see you when you talk?
If they are distracting somebody, you do have to lower them. That is the rule. They have the right to see just as much as you. Okay. Did you press the button? No comments, no questions? Mr. Cruz? Okay, go ahead.
You know, Sonia, we've been waiting for a person like you. It's the best time for this to occur. So, thank you, Sonia. And, you know, the thing is, is that there's always been man, woman, and then you have this transgender. And it's not going to stop there. It's going to keep on rolling, rolling, rolling. Because it is really a dismantling of our humanity. And it is an illusion. It is mental illness. And what is so sad-
No, it's not.
What is so sad is that we-
Okay, one more, you're out.
We are saving children.
One more, you're out too.
We are saving children because we're losing a lot of them. And it is a death culture from the left. Things have changed dramatically in this country.
Mr. Cruz, hold on. I've asked you. Come on. Now it's time to leave. You've done it three times. Please leave. We will not continue until you leave. Please leave. You had your turn to speak. It's his turn now.
And what?
Please leave. Thank you. Please leave. Have a nice night. Thank you. Have a nice night. Have a nice night.
At the end of the day-
Mr. Cruz, wait.
Okay.
Mr. Cruz, please wait. Anybody who wants to speak out right now will actually have to leave too. So, stand up and remove yourself. Kristi, please leave. Kristi, please leave. You started yelling and I just said it. Please leave. Please leave. We're not going to continue until you leave. Please display appropriate behavior, everyone. Please display appropriate behavior. Allow them their time to yell. Please leave. You need to leave. We will not reconvene. Okay, have your little time and then leave. Guys, please do not banter, chant, or nothing. Let them leave, please. You guys are all yelling out and I'm about to remove the room. Everybody stop right now. You guys continue. You're out. I don't hear anything from over here. Please, you three, leave. 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 I've asked all of you and I've been very polite about it. Leave. Please do not banter. Let it go. Everybody behave. On all sides, everybody. You guys are adults. There's kids in here. Let's display appropriate behavior. I'm talking to the people yelling. I don't want them to yell. I wasn't talking to them in the room. I'm talking to anybody else. Because everybody's stuck. One moment, Mr. Cruz. When the door's closed, you can continue. Thank you. Okay, let's go.
And I'll let you know something. Thurman, he's not going to do anything. You know, if he ever wanted to, like, maybe, you know, set a law, I guarantee you Newman's not going to pass it. He's going to veto it because, you know, he has places to go. Presidency. So, parental rights are going to be here for a long time. But let me tell you, as women are being erased, parental rights will start-
But let me tell you, as women are being erased, parental rights will start being erased. Because that is the agenda. It is the destruction of families. It is the destruction of individuality. And at the end, our children are going to be lonely, isolated, and despair. And a lot of them are not gonna be having children. Because it's one way to reduce the population realistically. And let me tell you, my father, you know, he was a beekeeper. And for seven years, and you know, he created a beehive out of glass, really close to the patio. I would watch these bees. And, and if you ever read Brave New World, a beehive has the same model as Brave New World. And that is, it's a community, identity, and stability. So let me, let me read some things in Brave New World. Just some things that, in the world state, humans serve a function and a purpose. For example, lore members, the human fetus are deprived of oxygen. They're treated with alcohol to make them knowledge deficit and smaller. Humans no longer produce. They have artificial uterus. There's no family. No monogamy. Relationships, no parental rights don't even exist. Individuality is limited. There is a patriarchal system. You know, it's there. Because you know, in our society, you know, we view that as something very negative. But in that system, it does happen. And how was life before? Before the world state? There were strong emotions inspired by family, relationships, in existence of parents, dad, mom, family, sexual repression, delayed satisfaction, cultural values. God-centered, individual, that was embraced. And sexual play was considered abnormal and immoral. But as you read, as you read further, it shows that they conditioned babies to hate books and hate flowers. And the director tells a story of a child blushing because the child hears the word parent, like mother and father. And it's pornographic. So, you only use those words in clinical studies. And there's a scene, students in a garden, hundreds of children playing. They're playing naked, erotic play. Because they embrace promiscuity, sexuality. Sexuality is the same as, you know, you've heard, you've heard the thing about, you know, our children have rights in education? Well, our children have rights in sex, sexuality. It's that transition that we have, we have to be very observant what these people are doing. And, and there was a boy, the boy was crying because he didn't want to participate in this erotic play. So guess what they do? They send the kid to a psychologist. So, I mean, they tell you what they're planning. It's not gonna end with transgenderism. Something's gonna happen further and further. You gotta put a stop to it. And honestly, I think it's too late for America. I think we're gonna break up because, because we don't wanna have this disillusion of non-truth, totally the destruction of humanity. And so I'm very proud of you, that all of you here, because Sonia, you wouldn't be able to make it without everybody here. This would never have happened. But, but what you're doing now, you're showing other school districts. Because you need, you're like the beachhead. You know, the beachhead, like, someone had to ram in to let the other folks come in because there were a bunch of chicken craps. And plus, you needed, we needed somebody, we needed somebody that was like a full package. You know, I'm not. I have a hard time speaking, even a lot of these people say I'm incoherent, something all over the place. And it is true. And Mr. Nah?
Well...
So, you came into the picture. And you got Monroe, a beautiful man there. So, I'm very proud. This is great, we're saving kids.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Mr. Nah, did you put your light on?
Yes.
I think the lights are not working for the end. Before we, before we begin, I mean, yeah, before you begin. We are now past 9:30. I didn't want to interrupt, Mr. Cruz. Do we have consensus to continue the board meeting? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, we're good, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, this is the first time I'm reading a script in board meeting. And I'd like to say, today was a real warm day and, and all of you guys had shown up for this exciting board meeting. I don't know if it was exciting, but I know many of you guys had fun because you guys are very cheerful and loud sometimes. So it's great, thank you for all joining us and coming. Thank you. But, let me tell you something about, that I had to write really something down that was important for tonight. When I'm looking at what is happening with our schools and particularly what's happening with the state of California. And what's going on with our community. Let me tell you, it's not about us or the people sitting next to you, it's not about that. It's, I feel it's deeper. And let me tell you. In 1848, in his Communist Manifesto, Karl Marx called for the abolition of the family to his followers. He said communism would ensure that children would be educated by the state and not by their parents. He had clearly said that. And I understand, many of us, or many of you have not read this or know about this, but this is a factual document. The making of the quote, and unquote, new man was the priority and the parents become state's enemy. So if you wanted to verify that fact, read newspapers for the last few years, what is happening. In 1963, civil rights leader Martin Luther King Jr. declared that in America, the group consisting of a mother, father, and child is the main education agency of mankind. Without love, there is no reason to know anyone. For love will, in the end, connects to our neighbors, that's one sitting next to you, our children, whoever they are, whoever they are. Our children is our children. And our hearts. That, that, it's one of us. If we don't have hearts, well, we, we're not human. But state does not want that. State does not want our hearts. State doesn't want our neighbors to be close. Matter of fact, states don't want us to have neighbors. A US legislation making Martin Luther King Jr. a day of federal holiday passed in 1983. Thank God for that. And today, we must make sure our parents are in charge of our children and not the state.
Thank you, Mr. Nah. Okay, Mr. Bridge?
Is this on? Okay, there we are. We've heard a lot tonight. A lot about parents' rights. And I got to thinking earlier today, and having been a parent in this district, having been a teacher in this district, that we as parents already have a lot of rights in this district. We have a right to place our child in any school in the district we want to. We have the right to make an appointment to visit the school, visit the classroom, visit the teacher, communicate with the teacher. Appointment to see the counselor and the administration. Back-to-school night, open house. And I will tell you, as a high school teacher, back-to-school night, I'd be lucky if I had half the parents there, when I wished I had everybody. And open house was even worse. I don't know what it is about parents when their child gets to high school, but it's like, okay, I've done all this stuff, K through 8, maybe K through 9, but you're now almost on your own is what it feels like with the number of parents that showed up when I was in the classroom. So it brings me to a question generically. And please understand, this is not directed at any specific individual household. But as we kind of heard tonight, what is going on at home if the child has not already shared this information with their parent? If this policy passes, we will have effectively shut the door on students confiding to a staff member or a teacher. You heard our attorney tonight mention the counselor with students 12 years or older and not being able to divulge that information if it's in a counseling setting. And we're basically not having the school as then a supportive place. So this likely involves the possibility of a child or a teen running away from home, maybe even, as we've heard earlier, contemplating suicide. And this proposed policy is only effective if the action, intent, attempt is known to the staff or administration. The key word is "known." If I don't know about it, I can't inform the parent. So, how good is this notification process if those students are effectively, to use the term that a lot of people used a lot earlier, not tonight, but basically throwing them back into the closet and slamming the door? So, another thing, there seems to be something bigger at play here besides an end to the, an end around to the failed bill, AB 1314. Are we trying to outdo other districts by being one of the first to pass this policy? Are we trying to get more ink on the front page of the paper? What about potential lawsuits? They're likely gonna be filed, somebody will file it, you can almost wager on that.
Let him speak, please.
Yeah, please, people, we listen to you. Please listen to us. Just what we need to do is to, you know, possibly spend more of our dollars and resources away from the classroom when we're all talking about that. And here's what I want to get to, the state board of ed last week just passed a new math framework. Very, very important. My wife worked on the last math framework as one of the few teachers that was sent up to Sacramento, and that was several years ago. But we saw what, what, that's what we should be discussing. What's in the framework? And getting a staff report as we enter the new, the new school year. That's what I would like to be discussing and not culture wars too. Teachers, here's what teachers want. Teachers want their students to have good attendance. They want their students to pay attention in class. They want their students to complete assignments and tests and get successful grades to graduate and be productive out in society. In whether that be in a college or career technical education leading to employment. That should be our focus. That's what everybody sends their, their children to school for. Not to have them converted, as we heard from a lot of people tonight. That's not our intent. So, that is, I'm gonna conclude my remarks with that.
Thank you, Mr. Bridge. Mr. Monroe?
I'll try to make this short. You know, in talking with every group here, I think every group here believes that parent involvement in the school is the most beneficial for the student. Where we differ is, is the minors' involvement. And we've gotta look at what, what is our obligation to, to these students, to a minor? You know, over, over evolution of society, we've, we've seen fit to enact laws to take care of minors. If you go way back, when they were getting married at 12 years old and, and having kids, life expectancy was a lot shorter. But through our evolution, we made laws to protect our youth because we realized how impressionable youth were. And how they made decisions when not taking all the considerations and the longevity of that decision into effect. And today, you've seen safeguards put into place. And we had somebody in here who specifically talked about teachers are like police and firefighters, they're held to a different standard. I believe that truthfully. You know, police officers can't talk to your kid that are suspected of a crime without having an attorney present. They have to talk to an attorney beforehand. Why? Because as a society, we realize that a youth could be very easily manipulated into admitting a crime that they didn't commit. They're impressionable. When a firefighter goes to a traffic collision and a youth is injured, that youth can't sign out. Unless a parent comes and does it for him, he has to be transported. Somebody underage can't sue somebody. They can't enter into a contract. If they did receive some kind of medical treatment and there was some kind of malpractice, nobody would know and they wouldn't be able to do anything about it without their parents to file that lawsuit on their behalf. So when we look at how we're taking care of minors, specifically in our schools, we have to ask ourselves, what do, what do we want as safeguards? As a society, we've set many. And is this one we have to consider? Because unfortunately, as a community, we've, we've learned to trust less and less people with our children. And our job, and one of the hardest things to do as teachers, as faculty, as police officers, as firefighters, as government service, is to be beyond reproach. It is the hardest thing to do. And the only way that comes is by being transparent. And allowing people to come in. And it's uncomfortable, it's not fun. You have a lot of information, a lot of perspectives that go into it. And those perspectives are different. And the hard thing is here, is realistically, I believe both sides wants what's best for our children. And we get so divided on these issues that we can't actually sit down and talk about it and see some commonality in what's best for our children. It's a shame at this time that we can't do that. You saw the divisive nature that we had tonight. It's frustrating. You know, we're really trying to, to do what's best for our children going forward. There is nothing better that I would, or nothing that I'd rather do as a board member than to talk about math curriculum. Than to talk about how we need to do better for our children. But unfortunately, the only way we can do that is, is by changing what's coming down. There's more and more, we're in a time where more and more is being pushed on our schools, more and more is being asked of our schools. And as a community, we have to start saying, where's the standard of what we expect in our school? And this is why you're seeing this, these kinds of decisions come into school boards meetings across the nation. And, and, and the divisiveness of it. People are polarized in their opinions and their decisions. And unless we can sit down as a community and start looking, moving forward with it and having conversations with each other and recognizing that truly at the core, everybody in this room wants what's best for the kids. We differ on what that is. But I don't, I don't think anybody in this room wants to do harm to our kids. And, and we have to start from there and learn to build on that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Monroe. A lot of what you said is exactly why we're here and what I, I mean, what I believe in my heart. And, and I appreciate each one of our board members' viewpoints that they bring in because they are able to bring a different perspective, which is good. And what you guys don't see behind the scenes, we do treat each other with respect and we do listen to each other, and that is something I truly love. Tonight, it was rough. Like he said, I don't want... Like he said, I don't want to be here having policies like this, but I don't want you to forget that there's a lot of beautiful things happening behind the scenes, too. Our staff is working hard, and I appreciate them doing that, and they are focused on the education. What we're doing is providing them a way to be able to do that without the noise and without the blackmail and without being bullied by Sacramento. I will tell you one thing, as a parent, we were shut down. We tried to have conversations. They pushed us out to politicians. I'm a soccer mom, I will say that. I'm a fitness trainer. I had no desire to ever be in this seat. The person that I unseated is a disgruntled ex-politician, and she's upset that we unseated her, the parents. When they go to try to recall me, they're not recalling me, they're recalling us. This is us. It's always been about us because we united to bring protection over our children. We trust the state, we trust the government, what we did, until our eyes were open and we no longer were able to because we noticed that we were sending our kids into danger. Tony Thurman, the Department of Ed, I've been in this seat, please let me talk, I've been in this seat for, I don't know, what is it, July? I've lost track because it's so crazy right now, since July. He's had every opportunity to talk to me. Four months ago, I introduced this policy. He could have picked up the phone, he has a direct line. I told our superintendent, you guys are not to take the heat, give him my personal cellphone. Any politician that's called him, I say, do not take the call, please refer them back to me. This is the policy that I brought forward. I take responsibility, I don't bring reckless things into here. You guys heard, I mean, thank God for our legal counsel. I feel bad he's had to sit here all the time, but that was to serve a purpose, to show people, this is legal. Here's the thing, the Supreme Court has already determined and ruled that parents have a fundamental right to direct the care, the custody and control of their children. And that right does not get taken away unless the parent is ruled unfit. We have a process. Let it go through this process. If these kids are in danger, I don't want to send them back to their house. That would be horrifying, horrifying. And you know what's really sad? There is harassment in poll, and believe it or not, it has like an overwhelming amount of Democrats that were involved in this poll. And I think it was like almost 60 to 70% of parents said they want parental involvement with these specific issues. We can't use polls or just people saying that, you know, the kids are going to commit suicide. Well, if they are, then involve their parents. I will say it again, are the people opposing this going to be at the gravesite with that parent if, God forbid, something happened to their child? Stop assuming that parents are dangerous. That's reckless. And I will say this, because a household is affirming or not affirming, right now they're saying affirming, a not-affirming household is dangerous. Where do you get that? Actually, if you ask me, and I've listened to tons of parents, it's actually very safe to be a not-affirming, loving, caring household because guess what? They're going to provide and pull their child in closer the necessary needs that they need to be able to get better. So for me, that is important. Bring the parent in. We have no right. And until Sacramento backs down, until Tony Thurman backs down, go on his website, go to the Department of Education, you would want to literally vomit. Until he backs down, we have to put safeguards. That's why I was brought here. I wasn't brought here for anything other than that. So when they come to intimidate, they send blackmail letters, let it be not for Chino, let it be for California to know that you have raged a war against parents, you've raged a war against parental rights, and you're putting our children at risk, and we won't stand for it because guess what? We are united, this isn't my seat, this is our seat, and I will continue to do what I have to do, and I won't be bullied, and neither will our staff. I won't let them be bullied either. I saw what Tony Thurman did. He gave him the look and said, really, really? Yeah, no, really. You're not going to bully him because if he does what's right for the kids, we protect him. Our staff, again, I will reiterate, they are amazing. They're working constantly about educational issues. And if we have to put safeguards in place to be able to let them do that, then you know what? Tell Sacramento to back down, and then I'll back down. So we do have to be careful in time. We're going to go ahead, seeing that there's no more discussion, and we're going to take a vote. Do you really want to get kicked out? You waited the whole meeting. Come on, guys. Do me a favor. Okay, I'll go and I'll do a roll call out of respect to my colleagues. Mr. Bridge?
No.
Mr. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz? Mr. Na?
Aye.
And I'm a yes, the motion passes four to one. Guys, we're almost done, and then you could celebrate or do whatever. Please, please, please. We got to meet the 10-minute mark so I don't have to get another consensus. So please just give us that. Hold on, we're almost done, and then we can celebrate together, okay? We're now, we're now on to consent. Pat, are there any speakers on consent items? Thank you, Pat. Board members, do you have any polls? Mr. Bridge?
No polls.
Mr. Monroe?
No polls.
Mr. Cruz? He said no polls, if you didn't hear. And Mr. Na?
I have no polls.
And I have no polls. For the remainder of the consent items, may I have a motion?
移到
Pat, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, five to zero. We are now on to information items. Are there any requests to speak, Pat? Board members, any questions?
Nope.
Thank you. We're now on to communications. Mr. Bridge?
Just very quickly, we have, this is the last board meeting before the beginning of school, which is in two and a half weeks, so I want to wish those students and staff and teachers a very good start of the school year. I know Cal-Aero has already started, so I wanted to mention that. Also, Dr. Enfield, we received an email from a teacher from Rolling Ridge before the Fourth of July holiday asking several questions about this policy. And since it passed, I'm wondering if a response could be done. I think I would appreciate that because the teachers are going to be very concerned about what goes from here on. So I think the more specific we can be in answering those questions, I would appreciate it.
Not a problem.
And for the two gentlemen that referenced my bringing a Bible that one time, I just wanted to let you know, I appreciate the comments. You don't have to ask where my wife and I are on Sunday morning, and I mean every Sunday morning, even when we go to Phoenix to see our kids and grandkids, and even when we go to San Jose to see my daughter and her husband. So just to let you know where I'm coming from. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Bridge. Mr. Na?
Yeah, I have a short comment, but in honor of all of our attendees tonight, being here over 100 degrees of heat, and I'd like to have a resolution presented on the next meeting to designate and declare July 20th as Parental Rights Day in California's Public So again, thank you very much for being here, and all this history was started here from Chino Valley. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz?
No, it's okay. It's time to ring bell.
No comments? No comments?
One minute.
Okay.
You go.
Okay, so, I've been thinking about doing this for a while, I've had it, so I decided maybe this is the best time. So the NEA, the largest teacher union in the U.S., supports and recommends this book. It's the largest of three million, so it's called Gender Career. I was loving, or 12 years old, the first time I can remember fantasizing about having a hot dog. I was lying fully clothed on a hillside under an open sky. I held a flood handful of grass between my...
Hold on a second. There's a child in here, so let's be mindful of what you're going to read out loud.
Maybe it's best not to.
Yeah.
But see, this is the stuff that we've got to be concerned with. This is the stuff that is being introduced to our kids, kids that are very impressionable and is supported by the NEA. So this book I'm going to recommend to ACT. There's also another one, Call Me Max. Now, this is hideous. This is at elementary level. So let me read page five. When a baby's born, a grown-up says, it's a boy, or it's a girl. If a brand-new baby could talk, sometimes that baby might say, no, I'm not. When a baby grows up, to be transgender, it means that they grow up, they're grown up, who said they were a boy or a girl made a mistake. So at this level, they're introducing uncertainty of what gender they are. And what is the whole purpose? Why are they doing this? Why are they seeding things in our children's minds? I'm telling you, it's really screwed-up stuff, people. And this is for elementary, the introduction of multiple identities, sexual orientations. This will screw up kids in the future, big time. We'll give this to ACT, their grandkids.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. I mean, Mr. Cruz. Mr. Monroe, it's been a long night, I'm sorry.
No comments in the interest of time.
Thank you so much. Dr. Enfield?
No comments.
Thank you. And my only comment is, we're in this together, guys, don't give up. I now adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting at 10:01.